All right, it is one o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order for Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Hughes and Council Jolly attending virtually. I need a motion to adopt the agenda, Council Kilic. I'll go to you if you want, but as a reminder, we are adding the casino letter of support to the agenda. As an emergent item, so it'll be eight point one. So when we make the motion to adopt the agenda, can you make it as amended? Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. So I'd like the recommendation that the July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda be adopted as amended.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Mayor, I'm just trying to find it. Just I'm in.
You check mark? He found it? Should be under reactions, maybe?
Forgive me, I just haven't been here doing this very much. There we go.
Okay. All right, that motion passes unanimously. We have two scheduled presentations today. We have, is it Shayna Campbell? Did I say that right? Shayna, nice to see you. I know this has been on our agenda for a couple of months now, or it feels like we've been expecting you. So I'll get you to go down to the mic, and we also have the library board's annual report coming to council. But we're going to go to Shayna first because she was the first to register. She would like to speak to us on complete street and active transportation plans. So take it away. You have five minutes whenever you're ready.
Mayor, I'm just assisting.
Powerpoint?
Yeah, it's just a minute.
Council Hughes, can I get you to turn your camera on?
I'm just having data issues, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be here, but please forgive me if I'm not on it all the time because I'm just burning through data.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, Madame Mayor, councilors and staff. My name is Shayna Campbell. I'm here today to talk about the prioritization and implementation of active transportation infrastructure within the mobility choices strategy with a particular focus on cycling infrastructure. So why? Why is this conversation essential? In recent years, we've seen a growing attention to cycling worldwide. Our most nearest neighbor Edmonton has recently committed a hundred million dollars to their bike plan for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six budget. This year, as St. Albert ends its ten-year transportation master plan, we welcome the mobility choices strategy which will guide our transportation vision for the next decade. And while we've invested in active transportation planning through the complete street guidelines and the active transportation plan, these plans have remained largely on paper. And while St. Albert has amazing cycle pathways for recreational cycling, the infrastructure is less supportive and safe for commuting by bicycle. So my family has embraced cycling as our primary and preferred mode of transportation. Don't worry, we also have a car. We ride a long-tailed cargo bike called an extra cycle, and my twin boys and I use it to cycle to daycare, getting groceries, and to explore our city. So in one year alone, we've cycled eleven hundred kilometers together. And with most of these trips being short, one to three kilometers, we've had lots of chances to see the strengths and challenges of cycle commuting in St. Albert. So first, some of the challenges. So safety is paramount for cycling with my children. We have, we rely heavily on the Sturgeon River multi-use path for east-to-west travel, but there are limited safe routes to take to the commercial destinations in the north and south sides in the city. And once their bike parking options are few and far between. We often resort to cycling on sidewalks as permitted in St. Albert, but the majority of the sidewalks in older neighborhoods are one point three meters in diameter, which leaves little space to safely pass pedestrians. And this is especially relevant, I think, today with the increase of e-bikes and scooters which travel at faster speeds. And while the Sturgeon multi-use trail underpasses are closed, like both are right now, we're forced to cross busy intersections at Boudreaux-St. Albert Trail, which feels hazardous, especially with young children in tow. And finally, connecting cycling with transit is difficult. There's few bike parking facilities at the St. Albert Exchange, and cycling to Naki involves crossing on and off ramps to the Anthony Henday Trail. So just a few reminders of the benefits of cycling. So cycling is beneficial for our economy, especially for personal economies. Riding a bike is cheaper than owning and driving a car, which is important during this time of inflation and high costs of living. A bike costs four hundred dollars to maintain for the year compared to almost ten thousand dollars a year for a mid-sized car. Cyclists spend more money at local businesses and shop more frequently. And finally, our city benefits fiscally for each kilometer I travel, about twenty-six cents back to society, compared to the eighty-nine cents society pays for each kilometer driven by car. So let's talk about health benefits. So cities with robust cycling infrastructure experience greater road safety for all road users, including pedestrians and motorists. It's estimated that cities with high levels of cycling infrastructure see reductions in traffic collisions by fifty to sixty percent, which is essential in achieving vision zero of eliminating fatalities in our streets. Daily cycling to school or work prevents serious disease, like a forty percent reduction in cancers and a fifty-two percent reduction in heart disease. And this is likely because daily bike commuters are able to meet their daily physical requirements, which currently forty percent, forty-three percent of Albertans do not. And I wanted to discuss what more access to cycling could mean for our kids. So Dutch kids are among the happiest in the world, partly due to the freedom and independence that cycling provides. So in the two thousand and fifteen St. Albert Safer Journeys to School Report, principal number one suggested promotion of active travel modes by piloting bike lanes and road diets. I would love for my boys to cycle to school one day, but current infrastructure and culture doesn't provide the safety or encouragement needed to make that decision confidently. So I feel a connected and protected network of cycling lanes would transform St. Albert into a child and movement-friendly city. So current infrastructure is fragmented, as shown by this Google Maps overlay of the bike mass. On the right, we see the suggested prioritization map from the two thousand and nineteen ATP GAPS assessment, including proposed trails in blue and a proposed protective bike lane in pink running north to south in the city. The gap assessment also highlights several intersection by the dots that require major and minor improvements. Well, last word on intersections. I'd like to thank Mr. Dean Schick for addressing my concerns about crossing Boudreaux at Sturgeon Road in November two thousand and twenty-three. Since that phone call, cycling infrastructure has become a bit of an obsession of mine. And I'm excited to see the direction that St. Albert takes with the mobility choices strategy. So thank you, Madame Mayor and councilors, for allowing me to speak today and getting cycling and active transportation back on the agenda. With the right investments, I'm confident that cycling mode share will increase in St. Albert, enhancing our city's sustainability and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sat on council fourteen years on. That was one of the best presentations I've ever seen. It was well thought out and really, really good. I appreciate it. I'm sure you made Mr. Schicks, who's in the room here today, made his day because this isn't how he lives and breathes. And I'm sure Peter Bailey up there would like to include skateboard infrastructure in there as well. Quick question, is there a specific ask that you have, or is it just try, as you said, try to get it back in the forefront of our conversations?
I think just about the timing of the new strategy. I think it is getting it back on the agenda. Without having kind of a roadmap of which projects we would like to tackle first, it would be difficult for an ask, but if I had to say my number, like, the reason why I almost didn't ride my bike today to this meeting was those two closures of the underpasses, which forces you to cross both Boudreaux and St. Albert Trail, which almost made me choose not to bring my bike. So I would say those intersection improvements would be my first ask.
Okay, cool. And the conversation of bike lanes is one that many locally elected sometimes scare away from. I mean, you, you have to be aware of the backlash Edmonton got, although I completely understand why they did it and you know, when you counter the investment in roads versus what they're doing in bike lanes, it totally makes sense. It just hits the news and it hits the provincial government's radar and they get and anyway, but St. Albert, I've always shied away from it because St. Albert allows, as you said, the bikes on the sidewalks. So you can stay off the road and you don't need the bike lanes. You've done a really good job of highlighting why that doesn't always work. I probably will ask Mr. Schick, but I'm pretty sure our new standards for sidewalks are much wider, so in newer areas to allow for the pedestrian and the bike traffic. But it's a, it's a conversation that is kind of sometimes a little fearful. Council Jolly, you had a question?
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna ask what the ask was, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the clarification. I've got, I've got a kid who's commuting all this week from Aitkinsdale to Lecombe Park, so I get it.
There you go, yeah. We have a few others, if that's okay. Council Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Mine's more about, can I get your presentation? Can you send your presentation through ledge services or do we?
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
Do we have it? Perfect. I just wanted, the map in particular, the one where you've identified the north-south route.
That one?
I mean, obviously, I mean, it's, it's a I mean, it's difficult to see, not only because of my age and my optical challenges, but also just relation to that. So I'd like to actually take a look at what your proposal is for north-south. Do you, do you know it right off by heart? Can you just outline where it is? Because I can't truly see where you have it on your pink or red.
Sure. Yeah, so this is from the City of St. Albert Active Transportation Plan GAPS Assessment Document from two thousand and nineteen. And I think they identified that creating any infrastructure on St. Albert Trail would be extremely difficult and costly and a political
boondoggle.
Boondoggle. So they identified that just moving that main north-to-south route, just a couple of streets over, I think, up Grandin Road in Liberton would be a viable option for getting that north-to-south connection piece net while also not trying to take a lane away from St. Albert Trail.
So you would be in support of that? That's the one that was proposed in that gap analysis and you would be, that's not you?
That's the red line?
No, this isn't mine. This is what was already proposed, and this would be amazing. This would allow us to get to Costco. This would allow us to get to boys' school. This would transform our lives.
Wow.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
I was listening to a podcast a while ago of a family in Edmonton who gave up both cars and do everything on pedal with three kids, I think they said. It's amazing. And yeah. So, okay, your presentation, as I said, was fantastic. I have no more questions from my members of council. Oh, Council Kilic? Oh, there's Council Brumaski. Go ahead. This is great. Okay, thank you. No, Council Brumaski's first to send you.
Thank you for your presentation today. It's nice that you'd come to council. Just have the question, are you a personal advocate or do you have like a cycling group? Are you associated with a bunch of people in St. Albert that do this kind of travel or?
Yeah, I tried. So there used to be a group called the St. Albert Bike Association. So when we moved here, I tried to pay fifteen dollars to join. They were instrumental in getting those two repair stands up on the, on the trail. But they unfortunately shut down as of February this year. They're no longer active. And I too would agree that I prefer to come here with like a thousand other moms asking for this, but I felt this year with this new mobility choices strategy, it was a bit of a window to talk about this right now. So yeah, I would love to form more groups in the future, but I wanted to come today just with the timing of this new policy coming into play.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Council Kilic.
Thanks for coming in, talking to us today. Obviously Edmonton has solved the winter use problem. But I'd just like to get your firsthand kind of perspective on how a cycle lane and active transportation meets your needs in the, in the winter. Because that, that's kind of one of the main rub points I always hear from other kind of non-cycling residents. So I'd love to hear your personal perspective on that.
Right. So personally, I don't cycle with my boys in the winter. We don't have studded tires. I think it's just about giving people another option. Edmonton did hold a winter cycling congress last year, so people do it. And I think it's just, it comes down to a personal decision and what option they feel is best for them and their family. I think most people wouldn't choose to cycle at minus thirty, but last winter we had many mild days that where the roads were clear and last year there wasn't one month that I didn't use my bicycle to get around in St. Albert. And I feel that this is a trend that will continue into the future.
The other one is that the parking, when you get somewhere, that always also seems to be a challenge. Any thoughts on on how the city could kind of help spearhead a solution to that or?
Yeah, well, I think one thing that the city already has done that is great is just to kind of observe how people are parking their bikes right now. So for instance, at the St. Albert Farmer's Market, there's a tent set up for people to park their bikes as they come to the market, which is fantastic. For the parking challenges at the St. Albert Exchange or Naki, I feel that both options are too exposed. I wouldn't feel comfortable leaving my bike there all day, for example. So it's just about seeing how people are using the infrastructure now and trying to provide physical infrastructure that matches what people are kind of already trying to do. Going back to the farmer's market, a lot of people park their bikes next to the tree or like on trees, which suggests to me that there's not enough bike parking at these big events. Yeah, we can see the bikes that are parked up next to trees and things like that.
Thank you.
Cool. Council Jolly.
Thank you. I'll throw it out there that my partner bikes in minus thirty. My Husky loves it, so there are out there. I just wanted to say, when you kind of, when that presentation gets to council, if your email's in with that, there is a group that I was involved with. We would bike and meet for coffee kind of first thing in the morning, seven, seven-thirty in the morning. So if you'd like that contact information, I can share that.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool. All right, I see no more questions from council. So there might be some questions. So the way it works is we have presentations from the public. So the library board is next, and then the next on our agenda is business arising from that. So there might be some questions that council has for our staff sitting here that arose from your presentation. So you might want to stick around for that, but I really honestly appreciate you coming in today. I've got a stepson who said he's never getting his driver's license, and he bikes from Oakmont to Landmark Theaters every day and winter as well. So I think he would appreciate some intersection improvements and added safety. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have the library board, and I've just got Deborah McTaggart-Baird registered, but you're doing it all yourself or is Peter there to support you?
I'm just loading it for the mayor, just a few minutes.
Oh, you guys, yeah, okay. We, we got a copy of the PowerPoint too, I think. Yep.
So thank you to city council and city staff for this opportunity to present the St. Albert Public Library's two thousand and twenty-three report to the community. Two thousand and twenty-three was a year of community connections for S A P L. It was also an exciting and successful year for staff and community members. As the foundation for our strategic planning, we engaged with St. Albertans in an extensive community needs assessment. That community-led process resulted in the two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-eight Here for You, Here for All, and led us to three key strategic priorities that will guide library work over the next five years. Early literacy, community engagement, and truth and reconciliation. With ongoing support from the City of St. Albert, we look forward to putting these priorities into action. The community needs assessment also informed the exciting refresh of key downtown library spaces, including new shelving and a more accessible layout for the children's area for wheelchairs and strollers. Funding through the Federal Canada Community Revitalization Fund allowed for the creation of a community living room, which has quickly become a vibrant gathering space for patrons and community members and organizations, drawing more people downtown and increasing community well-being. We're also pleased to see the community coming back to the library in pre-pandemic numbers. One of the objectives of the strategic plan was for calling for a fifteen percent increase in memberships by two thousand and twenty-eight, and we have actually achieved that objective in just one year. In-person visits are up eighteen percent to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy, and we increased programming by twenty-three percent to a thousand and sixty-eight programs serving forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six people, which represents a thirty-eight percent increase. Kids who read succeed. Early literacy and language learning are foundational to all future learning and educational success, and the library plays a pivotal role in building those skills. Every year, we do reach thousands of children. They come to the library for storytimes, after-school programs, special events and tours, and the library goes to them for school and daycare visits. The super-successful Reading Buddies Program pairs struggling readers with teen volunteer mentors. In two thousand and twenty-three, teen volunteers spent three hundred and thirty-six hours mentoring young readers across fifty-three sessions, and feedback from parents of both the young readers and the teen mentor volunteers has been especially meaningful. In two thousand and twenty-three, we hosted seven hundred and six children's programs, representing a sixty percent increase, and it's serving thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine attendees, which was a forty-two percent increase. Our hugely popular children's summer reading game celebrates the joys of reading while combating the summer slide that can inevitably occur during that time. So kids at both library locations read for over a million minutes, or the equivalent of seven hundred and twenty days in two thousand and twenty-three. The new community living room has quickly become a hive of activity at the downtown library, which is most evident during the monthly tea and banquet gatherings held the last Tuesday of each month in partnership with the St. Albert Sturgeon County Maytee Locals Red Willow Program. Creating this welcoming and comfortable space for people to gather aligns with S A P L's strategic priority of a community engagement, but it also aligns with the city's strategic priorities of creating vibrant downtown and enhancing community well-being. It brings a vibrancy to the downtown library that has really been fun to see. Another big success story this year has been the significant increase in the use at the Jensen Lakes Library. Both in-person visits and loans are up significantly. Families in the north side are, north side of this city are embracing this convenient location, and after-school programs continue to fill fast with waiting lists. In-person visits are up thirty-seven percent over two thousand and twenty-two, and have actually nearly tripled since we opened in two thousand and twenty. So that's great news. We want all community members to have barrier-free access to programs, services, collections, and staff support on their personal journeys to truth and reconciliation. And part of that journey is our commitment to creating an indigenous inclusion strategy and a truth and reconciliation strategy for the library. In two thousand and twenty-three, indigenous programs included film watch parties, author events, Maytee jigging classes, our popular tea and banquet gatherings in the community living room. The library partnered with many community organizations in two thousand and twenty-three, including the Maytee Locals Red Willow Program, St. Albert Further Education, the African and African Descendants Friendship Club, Out Loud St. Albert, and Neutral Ground to host events in library spaces. Our award-winning outreach team also hosted pop-up libraries, trail tales, and storytimes at partner locations and in parks, daycare schools, and community events.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, your time's up, but we allow questions. My first question is, can you please finish your presentation?
I love that question. I am almost done, but seniors, seniors were actually thrilled. It was part of the, the report. I hope you've had a chance to read. When actually a baby took their first step, we've been able to resume after the pandemic, the multi-generational storytimes at the Evergarden, the senior residents. And that was, of course, thrilling for the, the seniors there to be able to be part of that. So St. Albert Public Library is a vital municipal service funded primarily by the City of St. Albert. We thank the city for its ongoing support of library collections, programs, and services that engage and improve quality of life for our diverse community. Thanks so much. Any questions?
Excellent. I'll open it up for questions, and Wes Broadhead is first on the docket. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for your presentation. Thanks for sending it out yesterday, so I had a chance to sort of preview it, but certainly appreciate you coming here and the service that you provide our community is invaluable. I, just a question, you know, the numbers, they're all positive. Would you say that the impact of the pandemic is in the rearview mirror of, and all of that is now in the past, and we're even growing further rather than recovering from sort of the numbers that we lost during the pandemic?
Yeah, I mean, the pandemic definitely obviously had a huge impact, but I do feel, I mean, you can speak to this, Peter, as well, but my perception as a, you know, as a board member is that we are coming out of it definitely, like, the numbers are pretty much aligning and then sometimes increasing from two thousand and nineteen levels, which was a really high, high level of service that was being provided at that point. So just by the nature of what the, the library is, it did, it took a while for people to come back, but they definitely are coming back, and there's just, I feel, unlimited opportunity for what the library can be moving forward. There's just a lot changing in the world, and there's a lot of opportunity around the library being a source of support around those issues.
Yeah. I love your line, those that read succeed, and, and the idea of of investing in children is so important. So I appreciate what you're doing there. Next question is about Jensen Lakes Library. Recognize that, you know, if you live in Jensen Lakes, that it's your walk, right? My question, are people actually, like, if they get into their car from sort of the east side of the trail, will they go over to Jensen Lakes or will they make, make their way down to the main branch here?
I'll let Peter answer that, but I'll just say anecdotally, I know people, various people, like friends and book clubs that I'm in, that people do actually like have a preference for that location, which I think is, can happen. I mean, a lot of people still definitely prefer the downtown location because it's obviously larger and there's more available, but it is surprising how much beyond sort of the young families and the, you know, explosion of population at that end of the city. There, there still are people that are in the older areas of St. Albert that go, but maybe you have something to?
I, I think parking is still a bugaboo for downtown, especially on market days. Market's fabulous, of course, but you know, our regular users tend not to come on Saturday because of the market. So a lot of people use Jensen Lakes Library as their holds pickup place. You know, there's a there's way more people picking up their holds at Jensen Lakes than there should be, you know, population-wise.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think there are a number of people from all over the city who are at least doing that, you know, using Jensen Lakes as their preferred pickup spot.
Appreciate hearing that.
It's also interesting in terms of the, the north side area around Jensen Lakes, you know. There are people who've come into the Jensen Lakes Library and who've said eventually, they didn't know there was another library.
No.
So, which is interesting.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and thanks again for the presentation. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Council Mackay has a question.
I'm gonna ask for Shayna. Is there bike parking at Jensen Lakes?
Yeah, it's, that's
Is I, I was trying to remember in my head because I just, I was just there, and I'm trying to remember if there was outside biking stalls there. I couldn't remember.
Yeah, we, we insisted that, and Melkor, the landlord, was very good about putting in some, at least one bike rack, yeah.
That's all the questions you had?
It was just because of previous conversation that I couldn't, and I was just there, but I, obviously, I didn't ride my bike, so I didn't have use of it.
It's not obvious you didn't ride your bike. Council Jolly, Council Hughes, do you have anything? Council Brumaski, go ahead.
Thank you. Just since Peter mentioned the people not knowing about the other library, are you still getting a lot of people from out of town at the Jensen's Lake location?
I'd say both locations.
Oh, okay. So the people that don't know about the other library, are they new to St. Albert? Are they from, like, say, Mournville or something or what?
There's a lot of people from, who are new to St. Albert, who are, are coming to Jensen Lakes. You know, it's in their neighborhood, so they're coming in there. Initially, when the annexation happened, we did get a couple of people who asked, came into Jensen Lakes and, and said, this is the first City of St. Albert service that they're sort of registering for, so.
Oh, okay. So that's Sturgeon County. How far out does, do people come in?
We do get a lot of Mournville folks, and of course, the, you know, the Sturgeon Heights community.
Okay, thank you.
I see no more questions. So as always, thank you for coming in. It's nice to get the, we got the report, or I got the report a while ago, probably a month ago. But it's just nice to have a public presentation on it, so hopefully the newspaper or anyone else who's watching sees what you guys are doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, next one. Oh, so you do have a question. Sorry, Counsel, you have a question.
I just had one quick question. Thanks for presenting. So for the children's summer game, is it, are you going to be accommodating all the kids that complete the program? I know that in the past, there's been issues where not all the children were able to do the party at the end because there wasn't enough room. Are you planning to accommodate all the kids that complete the program if they want to go to the magic show or whatever it is?
I, I hope so. I'll have to get back to you that on that.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just don't want to have any kids disappointed that they wanted to go and weren't able to show up because it was filled up. So that would be great. Thank you.
It's popular. All right. We are, business arising from the public presentation. So does anyone? Wes brought his first, again, on the docket, a question of administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in relation to the active transportation, the plan for around bike paths, that, that map brought back memories. The, the North-South Trail along Liberton and going north, is there a capital program to, to enact that?
Through you, Mayor Herron, to Counsel Broadhead, right now, there is no direct project associated with that link. The more imminent projects focused on potential accommodation along St. Albert Trail, where we, as an example, with the barrier wall, delivered the trail on the south portion with the new development and expansion of North St. Albert Trail. We've delivered trail as well. So one of the barriers on St. Albert Trail is still the Sorensen Churchill Overpass, but along that segment of road now there is majority of actual accommodation through a trail. Again, recognizing there's potential kind of operational considerations, perceptions of, you know, safety concerns around intersections. Alternatives would exist for alternative routes, but we haven't enacted any of those routes.
Yeah. Fair enough. So my question, and I, I noticed that the, the build form north of, of Drew Bellrose going north has nice wide pathways. So is that the standard then going north then?
Through you, Counsel Broadhead, yeah, yes, absolutely. So that's where we've been successful to actually apply our complete streets now. It is being a new project, a new capital project, taking advantage of that and applying those new standards along other segments. As an example, the St. Albert Trail via retrofit, which we haven't had any projects or RMR kind of associated with that, so we haven't, haven't done that. But yes, at the north end, we've applied those standards and gone in both a sidewalk as well as a multi-lane trail.
Yeah. And I want to commend you what you're doing on Villeneuve Road. That's, that's gonna be gorgeous when those trees get to grow up a little bit. Will that continue all the way out then to Ray Gibbon?
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Yes, that's correct. There's plans as we do the further improvements on Villeneuve Road. It'll connect to Ray Gibbon Drive, and while we do the coordinated efforts of improving Ray Gibbon Drive and widening it, there'll be a trail on the east side that will connect as well as a west side on St., on Ray Gibbon Drive, sorry, as well. So there'll be a full connectivity between the two corridors as well as a future Fowler Way.
Yeah. So I note that the, the sidewalk or the pathway there is, is considerably wider than one point two meters. Is, is that's to intend to allow two-directional traffic on bikes and stuff?
That's, that's correct. And so where applicable, we have a wider standard now for sidewalks along, kind of, it is relevant to the classification of roadway. So as you get into their arterials, they're wider, minimum two-point-two-meter sidewalks. Along Villeneuve Road, one thing that we identified was that there's no trail or sidewalk combination on the south side. So we widen the trail anticipating higher volumes and usage because we're limiting to the north end. So where possible, we're taking some, you know, kind of operational anticipated impacts and, you know, appropriately designing the infrastructure to meet what the future needs and existing needs would be.
So in essence, what we're building now actually, it may not be a bike path along the, the road surface per se, but we actually have bike paths in our new sort of build form going north.
That's correct. So one consideration is that we have the benefit of accommodating the multi-use trail, which can accommodate both pedestrians and cyclists very comfortably. And, you know, aligned as the city grows and maybe the demands increase. I'll use the example Fowler Way, where we'll protect the right-of-way to eventually accommodate a potential dedicated bike lane. But if the demands are not there, if the, if the priority is not there, then it may not be a case that we deliver it right away. But there would be a multi-use trail. So the opportunity to use the facility for cycling and/or walking or, or other active modes will definitely be delivered and exist. And then as the community grows and the, the needs expand and, and the opportunities exist to deliver on an improvement, then the right-of-way will exist, and the roadway will be constructed in a sense that it'll minimize disruption to deliver on the new infrastructure as well.
Thank you for that. So I turned my attention to Fowler Way, Neil Ross, across the top. The safe streets, I remember seeing a, a diagram where they had the bike lane, actually, on the, on the road surface. Or are we, are we going to that? Or are we going to, what, what's it gonna look like when that eventually gets built?
The, through you, Counsel Broadhead, the, the actual cross-section does have a dedicated, future-planned dedicated bike lane. It's separated from the vehicle travel path, so there'd be a physical barrier between vehicles and then a dedicated section or, or area for cyclists, for the bike lanes, and then a dedicated area for pedestrians as well. So you're separating all these different modes that, you know, can be better accommodated. We're seeing, of course, as you get in, you know, there's a conflict if cyclists are using the roadway of the vehicles, and then a conflict if cyclists are using the multi-use trails or sidewalks with pedestrians. So there's that accommodation for dedication and space, shared equity of the road right-of-way for the different users.
I guess my fundamental question is, as we go into the future, the, the intent is, though, is to have active transportation as part of our overall design?
Yes, absolutely. So active modes, it are definitely a component. And we've just gone through, now we just started the mobility strategy as, as was identified. We're at a point right now where we just finished some internal and external engagement and which, you know, there's some key areas and targets and active transportation is a definite target and priority for us as we, you know, look to grow the network as well as consider potential retrofitting as well. That's one thing that's going to be have to considered by the city because as you deliver the network, you want a holistic, you know, connectivity and routing system. It's not a case where you, as an example, can deliver a bike lane or infrastructure on Fowler Way, which is great for an east-west segment but doesn't connect you to other areas of the city. And so we want to look at that and, and ultimately take it beyond just the gaps assessment and look at what maybe a better delivery program would be. So in terms of a prioritized route, the map that was shared is fantastic. It is from our, our gaps assessment and, and planning. But with that, it wasn't really identified or, uh, uh, ultimate delivery plan selected. It really just shows what could the network look like and what would be routes. So what would it take to deliver? What did the process, what would be the first corridor and, and so on? How would you connect the city over time?
Fair enough. While new builds easier than retrofit, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a struggle to find extra room on roadways that you can expand, right? So anyway, appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Counsel Kilik.
Thank you, Mayor, to administration. The, as we do RMR work, it's usually like-for-like. So in the transportation master plan and kind of gap analysis, if we saw that, for example, curb cuts could really improve access for, for bike users, would, would they be accommodated in that new work?
Through Madam Mayor to Counsel Kilik. If, if, as an example, there was an existing accommodation, and maybe there was a relocation or a better site or better design, like updated standard application, then it would be part and considered as a RMR program. In terms, we do have the, the growth charter associated with the act of transportation, and that's where we would maybe look at adding new improved infrastructure that may not be existing in the network to date. So it's the new sidewalks, it's new opportunities of maybe those examples of the ramps or, or accommodation. That's, that's where that scope of work would, would ultimately be housed.
But I think if I could follow on, and, you know, Donnie, please feel free to chime in. I think there is a wider discussion on RMR philosophically, right? And so the like with like piece, and it's not related specifically to transportation infrastructure, right? But for, for built form facilities, when we look at accessibility, we look at, you know, potential new green standards. You know, these are things that we're working through to figure out what flexibility we may want to actually recommend to council to put into the system.
Then just a, a much broader question. If council recognized this as a priority, bicycle transportation, would it take a new, like, we've done a gap assessment already, and it, it has identified the plan that we saw on, on the screen. But if, if we wanted to move forward with actually doing specific work along that plan, would that require a new capital project and prioritization? Or, or is, how, how, how would we move forward to take that plan into action? Which I think was the presenter's question.
Absolutely. Through Madam Mayor, Mayor, to Counsel Kilik. I think at the end of the day, what I would recommend is that we complete the mobility strategy and highlight where active transportation stands in terms of priorities. And, and, you know, we're right now just compiling information from our stakeholders and from residents. It also will allow us to do some technical analysis and do a little more, you know, network review, maybe an update, you know, expanding and perhaps enhancing the information that was created from the GAPS assessment twenty nineteen. What's been completed, updated status, what's been completed to date? Other considerations in terms of connectivity with other modes, like, again, the transit department has added bike infrastructure to their transit, so there's connectivity between modes now. And so a more holistic, ultimately multimodal network delivery, inclusive in consideration of active transportation. And with the mobility strategy, our plan and intent is to have an implementation plan as well. So amongst the variety of different targets and objectives, active transportation would be a component and, you know, to, just to look at it in a very strategic direction to say, what would, what would be the steps necessary to best deliver effectively and efficiently in regards to active transportation? And what are our ultimate kind of short-term and moderate-term objectives and priorities that the city wants to achieve and meet?
Thanks for that. I, I think sometimes we, we think we can fix a problem just piecemeal and, but to have an overarching strategy that says, okay, we have, this is what we have to do, big picture, and this is the budget it's gonna take and how long is, is very important to keep that, that bigger picture in mind. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Shig, you talked about an implementation plan that you're working on. Is this council gonna see it, or is that a next-term thing?
Through Madam Mayor, it is, it will be a public document. Like, the mobility strategy will be a public document and will share an implementation plan as well. I think one thing, though, I just want to clarify is the implementation plan isn't being worked on right now. It'll be, we'll finish off the mobility strategy, which is anticipated to take till end of twenty twenty-five. And then we'll have with that an implementation strategy or plan, which will ultimately be shared at, at the, I think the effort and emphasis will be around if there's any new capital project charters associated with the delivery, those would be created and developed and validated with background information with it from the mobility strategy or integration and updates of the existing charters, like we have the active transportation charter already. So it's really just an incorporation of the project delivery and plans associated with that scope of work.
Into that charter that's existing, which is, which is a an annual chunk of money ongoing, right? It's not a one-off here and there. Okay, that's what I figured.
That's correct. It's currently really been focused on the gaps, eliminating the gaps that exist in the network right now for sidewalks. It's been a key component in the last three, four years.
Okay. I, I was thinking, I, I pulled up the active transportation plan. That was two thousand nineteen, we worked on that approximately.
That's correct.
Yeah. So Counsel Kilik, Counsel Brumansky, we're not part of that. Not suggesting that we do a committee of the whole or a workshop on active transportation if you're not gonna have this strategy and implementation till after twenty-five. But that next council probably would benefit from a really fulsome conversation, an education session on how the, how those kind of models, modes of transportation intersect transit. How riding a bike actually helps every car driver because it takes a car off the road, all those kind of things. So, yeah, I think that might be something, Mr. Fletcher, you would think about for the next council in the next term. Last little word is I, I follow a YouTube channel called Not Just Bikes. And it spends an enormous amount of time looking at what they do in Amsterdam and, and Netherlands and Copenhagen of about, it's, you've probably seen it, just good urban planning, and it's all about bikes and transit and trains, and it's a good one. You might like it too, Shayna. Not just bikes. All right. Oh, I got Counsel Kilik, you done? Okay, then I got Counsel Mackay. Sorry, Ken, I didn't see you.
Oh, no, that's fine. I think you asked also my question in relation to implementation because I guess, and, and thank Ms. Campbell again, because I actually pulled up the active transportation plan myself to look at that spine. So just following in relation to the mayor's comments. So, so the spine right now, as proposed in twenty nineteen, the spine that was up on the presentation.
The red line?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they call them spines and ribs. Who knew? Anyways, my, my question would be then, it's relation to the mobility choices, the survey or the complete conversation that's going on currently or is, I think, is it concluded now? Yeah, it's concluded.
It has concluded.
Would, would that included feedback in relation to spines and ribs and all that? Or was that something separate in entirety? Because it would feed into a little bit in relation to implementation as well.
Around some of the questions, the engagement focused on key targets because the mobility strategy is, is really kind of expanding on the municipal development plan. And so it's not a case that we had to recreate the wheel and, and come back and ask certain priorities. But the, the focus was really around, around transportation considerations, modes. What are community priorities? And, you know, whether it be on, in regards to public transits, active transportation, corridor improvements, network improvements, those types of questions to see what in the grand scheme of things residents or stakeholders may really want to see focused on in, in targets in the next few years.
Okay, I appreciate that. But I mean, in relation to the work we did in twenty nineteen around the act of transportation and the development of spines and ribs and, and connectors and crossroads. So what was, like, are there, in relation to the next steps, implementation that you've discussed? I mean, so is there a high level kind of, kind of, when we created that spine? I mean, you're obviously, I mean, it's gonna go through some older areas. Is it gonna incorporate old infrastructure as Counsel Kilik was talking about? Or will it include a business case to actually develop new infrastructure that would actually make it a, a true spine that would go north-south?
Sorry, thank you for that clarification, Counsel Kilik. I, I think the intent of that would be is that it's dedicated infrastructure associated with bike lane, like a dedicated bike accommodation. That was the intent around that. Now, the existing network, one thing that we heard, because this is, the active transportation plan was really a supplemental document following the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen transportation master plan. And out of that time, the public engagement, what we had received was that for the most part, residents, and I, I just want to be upfront to say, recognize that at the time of engagement, Hemington was just starting their bike infrastructure, and so it was a fairly contentious topic. And the feedback that we had received from our community is that for the most part, bike lanes were not a priority and that the focus was around recreational use, which are trails seem to, to offer residents their viable and safe and, and kind of appreciated accommodation. And so the bike lane infrastructure, that plan, was largely conceptual based on looking at the network, what infrastructure could be kind of delivered, what would be routes considered? And so, and we're minimizing, as an example, like, again, not removing travel lanes on St. Albert Trail or reducing any kind of operations on other corridors, a key corridor. So to answer your question directly, would be, yeah, that document, that app is conceptual. It wasn't really based on, say, Keith. There was consideration where residents had shared information in regards to desire spots. And so there was an interpretation of information received. But it wasn't a case where we had a, a map and, you know, engagement saying, "Do you, would you like this route? Is your preferred route Liberton or Mirror Drive?" That, that wasn't the extent of engagement for them.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. I think that's important because, I mean, it's not like we had full engagement. These, like you identified, it's conceptual. It could change if we ever decided that this is the direction that we want. It could change if we ever decided that this is the direction that we wanted to go. All right, I appreciate that.
All right, I see no more questions on the screen and no more questions in the room. So I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. There's only one thing on it. Which is the minutes. So could do one the other, we could read consent or we could just move a motion to adopt the minutes, whatever you guys want. Somebody do it. I'll pick on somebody. Council Mackay, go ahead.
Which one do you want me to do?
Just do consent, it's fine.
I'll just do the consent that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one regular council meeting minutes of July second, twenty twenty four.
Awesome. Call for the vote.
Forgive me, Mayor, I just can't see it right now. I know it's clear glare, but I'm in favor.
Sorry? In favor, Council Hughes? Okay. Um, that motion or voting is closed and that motion passes unanimously. So the minutes from July second were just approved on consent and now we're back to Mr. Schick with Saint Anne Street back lane improvements. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Yep. So good afternoon, Madame Mayor, council members. My name is Dean Schick and I'm the manager of Transportation with Engineering Services. I'm here this afternoon to present background and make a request for project funding associated with the Saint Anne Back Lane Improvements. Uh, today's presentation should hopefully be quick and by the end offer you some background on the project, current status of the area and then ultimately link to the recommendations before council for the project funding. And then some time with any questions that you may have. The Saint Anne Street Back Lane is located in the northeast area of our downtown and connects Perron Street to businesses to the east. It is not a full through through route though and does not connect to St. Edward Trail. So it's a it's essentially an access and exit into the area, but no, no through connection. The proposed project before council is the Saint Anne Street Back Lane Improvement that's timely and being recommended for completion in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five to allow for this work to be completed ahead of anticipated development. The first planned impactful development is located at thirty two Saint Anne Street, highlighted in a blue on this map. And the site is a proposed eight story mixed use commercial residential building that requires full use of the laneway as its only planned entrance and exit. Site improvements are underway and offsite improvements have already been completed by the developer, inclusive of the island and median work on Perron Street with adjacent site power burial or removal of the existing overhead power in direct vicinity of the development site of thirty two Saint Anne. During the development permit application process for the site, the city committed to performing the remaining overhead power burial along the segment of the laneway west of the site. And with anticipated increased demands of the laneway in its current state, a reconstruction is also recommended. The improvements to the Saint Anne Back Lane will include the following scope of work. Critical work is associated with burying the existing overhead power lines. This work addresses the travel width for vehicles within the laneway and allows for the segment to meet Canadian standards for two directional vehicle paths. The area will remain a narrow travel path, however, it will help in addressing speeds and will allow for minimum width requirements to be achieved. The current width of the laneway is about five point two meters and required up to date standards as meeting a minimum of six point zero meters or essentially three meters per travel direction. With a power buried, the width will be six point one meters, meeting this criteria. The estimated cost to perform the line burial and connections and services to the commercial sites is approximately just over five hundred thousand. And this work is proposed to be performed in twenty twenty four, but requires confirmation and subject to Fortis Alberta's schedule. Storm and sanitary utility work will be performed as well. This scope is largely aligned to RMR related work and is addressing current state of infrastructure that requires replacement. The estimated value of this work is about three hundred thousand and this work is proposed as a secondary phase in twenty twenty five. The final scope of work is to reconstruct the laneway structure. The new structure will be designed to accommodate the anticipated higher volumes and potential increased demands of waste management vehicles and higher large load vehicles that may help it delete alleviate deterioration and failure of back lane over time. Estimated cost for this design and construction of the laneway is about three hundred and ninety thousand. With the value of work shown here and additional cost of contingency based on approximately twenty percent and construction management costs of about ten percent. The total project value is about one point five four one five hundred, or one million five hundred forty one thousand five hundred. To provide a quick status update, the project to Saint Anne Street, the back lane improvements is largely a concept completion and is ready to advance to detailed design. Administration has been in touch with Fortis about the general scope and costs of removing the power poles and burying the power lines. However, nothing has been formally formalized for schedule or, you know, will be subject to approved project costs for delivery. If the recommendations advanced through approval, administration will immediately engage with Fortis to confirm the project to advance and schedule work and advance the detailed design for the laneway structure and utility work. Once the design is completed, the project may be tendered for its construction. It is hoped that Fortis will be able to advance work in twenty twenty four for the power, but this will need to be confirmed. Before council today is the recommendation to approve Charter N O eight six, which approves the Saint Anne Street Back Lane Improvement Project that will be funded from the noted sources. The funding being approved will empower the project to be initiated with the intent to complete applicable overhead power burial in twenty twenty four and remaining scope in twenty twenty five. With that, I appreciate your time and allowing me to present and will take any questions.
Sorry, Council Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm assuming this work needs to be done in order to access that building that's going up at niche, right? So some I question really is around burying the power. Will that take care of all of the power in the sky in the in the downtown core then?
Along the along the laneway, it will.
There'll still be some in the downtown area? Like some admission for sure, but I mean, over on on this side of the river.
I believe so. I would have to look to confirm, so I don't look you in the eye and lie to you over that to know what exactly it's my, the focus has been largely around that back.
Yeah.
So I don't, I'm trying to think of off the top of my head, I cannot think of any other or like off the Saint Joseph back lane, I don't believe there's overhead power in that area. And so I'm I but we can confirm that.
Okay, and and that portion of the work is dependent upon Fortis doing it or do we do it?
The actual power line itself, the main power line has to be Fortis Alberta and then private commercial site servicing would be through a separate subcontractor.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
No problem, Council Kilic.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to administration. The transformers at the end of that line where the three poles are. I it was a little bit unclear in the background or it said there was some front end loading that was going to take place. And then that implies to me that this is kind of like an offsite levy project due to growth of the niche building. Are we recovering that three hundred and whatever it was, thirty thousand dollars? For any of the work that was being done by Fortis for those right at the end by the niche site itself?
Though that entire cost was by the developer for the development site as part of their permit for construction, for the development permit. So that was full full cost on the developer. Though this this project is for work associated with the remaining poles to the west of that site. But all power connection relocation, inclusive of the transformers, as well as the poles and servicing was worn by the developer.
Okay, so. And I assume that work has to be done at the same time, right? Those those last three poles by the niche site. They they get done and paid for by the developer or?
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, Council Kilic, the actually the the work has already been completed by Fortis for the developer in adjacent to their site. When the site expanded slightly to the west, there is one more pole, I believe, that has to be removed and buried. But they they're substantially completed that power burial is my understanding.
But there but but at the end of the niche, end of the the access to the niche site right now, there's three poles real close together with a whole bunch of transformers on them. That's what I'm asking for is 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 that our now our job or is that Nisha's responsibility?
Sorry, my so I just on the you're just for clarity, you're referencing on the west side of the of the site. Yes, closest to St. Edward Place. Sorry, okay, my apologies for my misunderstanding. There is again, because they expanded and and went purchased one lot beside them to the west. There's one of those three poles that is still applicable with the developers for their work. The remaining two that we're referencing would be part of this project as part of the outside of the scope of the developer. The opportunity does exist right now to try and coordinate with Fortis to do that work. And so there's no, you know, misunderstanding like if they're onsite mobilized and and performing this work, our intent would try to be would be to try and coordinate with them and have that all done at at once. And that's in process, I guess, discussion with Fortis. They're aware and the developer is aware and we're just looking to have that done. But for clarity, the developer would be responsible for the costs associated with that one remaining pole as part of the development permit.
Okay, but they've they've already done a big chunk of their work, paid for it. That's done the rest.
That's correct.
Primarily is is up to the city, not we're not going to recover anymore from what the numbers you've shown here. That's through offsite levies or or agreements, right?
That's correct.
The the other question I I had was the community hall. I think it's very tight there and they've they've always had barricades. I am not, can't recall from walking down there, sitting at Jack's Burger Shack, there there's something protruding along the the end of the building. Is it like gas meters or a walkway or something? Is this going to solve that pinch point? There as well?
Is through Madame Mayor to Council Kilic. So that is the narrowest section between the two buildings, the two structures. But that is also where that width of six point one meters is accommodated. On the south side to the where Jack's Burgers is and and whatnot, there's some curb stops that protect ultimately the building. We wouldn't be looking to remove. I mean, when the reconstruct happens, we remove them and deal with those. But ultimately, we'd want to make sure that still there's protection if there's consideration of the buildings or anything like that, whether it be curb socks, bollards, whatever the case, right? We could minimize, you know, the impact of the area while maintaining that traveling, like the key objective is deliver the minimum six point zero width to accommodate the three meter travel paths. And if there is any infrastructure, whether it be linked directly to the buildings themselves or the buildings, that we would make sure that that's a consideration as well.
The the doctor's office along the street there or the back alley, it has it has parking that backs out in into the alley. Will any of that? Parking lot space be affected by making this a more developed thoroughfare kind of?
So right now it might be a case of unintended or unapproved use of lane rate. And what would be happening is ultimately that lane would be transitioning to its intended use for vehicle movement. We work and coordinate and collaborate and communicate with the stakeholders in that area and whether it be through road markings or anything like that, then we can try and essentially address that. If there is a misunderstanding of site parking that kind of falls back and overflows into that laneway, we'd want to alleviate that and stop that from happening. But we that would be part of the design and unfortunately, at this moment, I don't have really a a full design ahead in front of me or anything to work from.
Yeah, I you're generic answer. I think Mr. Schick is the right answer. It's always been a challenge there that people, you know, park a big long, huge truck that sticks out into the alley and it creates a a real problem inadvertently. I mean, big trucks exist, so we have to figure out a way to accommodate that, I guess. The the last question would be relative to communication with the BIA. This request was on their list, so I I would hope that it had been shared with you through active element. But it was recognizing that that area is unsafe, I guess, or dark at night, especially in the winter. And there's a request for at least some lighting. And if we remove the poles and make this a major thoroughfare serving niche, there's going to be a lot of traffic. That that roadway could become very busy. Is there any plan to put up lighting, recognizing we're actually removing the poles that lighting might have gone on?
Uh, through Madame Mayor to Council Kilic, no, there is no intent to prefer provide any back lane illumination. It's it's not necessarily a standard that the city follows right now for lighting back lanes. Where we are, I think there there's the site on Saint Joseph Street where we're adding streetlights to the to the roadway to address receive concerns. And that's in line with a BIA request.
Yep.
Uh, so that's a separate project outside of of this. But yeah, due to restrictions in terms of the actual lane, what right of way, I mean, it would be counterintuitive to remove a pole, deplace a pole. And so there also isn't necessarily anticipated high active transportation, like it'd be vehicle traffic and and anticipated be using that back lane, reduce speeds to address kind of any safety issues or concerns. And the narrow lane width will probably accommodate that and be very influential in terms of driver behavior in that area. But with the site access for pedestrian or active modes from the front from Saint Anne Street being accommodated, I I I suspect there's limited conflict on that side.
So even it could could it be a pen potential that is looked at in the design that where the city parking lot is by the Thai restaurant that I a we could still remove the power poles, but could put in a a late a light standard in that area to to at least well, it would give a safety to the city parking lot. But we've also had a lot of complaints over the over the years on kind of rowdy parties spilling out into the back parking lot from the community center and RCMP concerns about, you know, it's dark back alley. Problems happen it it as well as the BIA request, but which stemmed from those those community center challenges that they were having. Is is any lighting even a possibility that could be considered into the plan or is it too far along in the design?
I hate saying, sorry, through Madame Mayor to Council Kilic, I I hate saying no, it's it ultimately this the lighting has not been in consideration to date for accommodation with the project. I would dare say maybe if the issues were around lighting to say that part because there's a parking area adjacent to the community hall and if that was kind of an area of concern or anything or that the parking lots to the east of the community hall. Site specific like lighting of parking lots is a private development and that can be considered to light that area. But it wouldn't be focused in part of this project. It would almost be a dedicated project then towards lighting that parking lot area and in terms of future, if if that was a desired project or a need from whether it be communicated through BIA or anything like that, I would I would suggest we would bring that as a separate project and and request.
Okay, thank you.
Council Bransky, your turn.
Thank you through Madam Mayor to administration. A couple of the the risks that were listed in the background or it said site constraints or resulting impacts of detailed engineering and design could influence the final asset infrastructure delivery. So where like the pricing could change quite a bit if you run into, you know, specific issues in in that clause of what you're mentioning there. So how like the number that you're asking for, how do you see it possibly fluctuating or can you even guess that at this point in time?
Um, thank you through you, Madame Mayor to Council Bransky. I I think there are, of course, unknowns being that we're just at a concept level and no detailed design. So one thing that we've done is we've added twenty percent contingency. So there's a fairly substantial in that value. There's a fairly decent value. I want to say it's around two hundred thousand or so of two two hundred thirty thousand for contingency. And so I I it's a small segment. I think overall, some of the site considerations and and constraints would be again, that area as it narrows between the two buildings, what can be done in that area? Possible some of the utility infrastructure, if there are kind of any drainage issues or considerations as well as I think I we've we uh as well as I think I we've we hashed it out early with Fortis, but one of the concerns was around uh new transformer is going to be required on the west, oh, sorry, the west side of the of the lane as well. So I think we've got that out of the right away of the lane. So I think we've that as a risk itself has been addressed, but um, so I I guess to answer your question, you're right in regards to I don't have the details to say what right now the unknowns are. But I'm confident to say that with the contingency requested uh that we would be able to address them.
Okay. And then um the construction like with the niche development, you know, they're still moving equipment and you know how messy construction can be and they're going to be using that pathway. So uh your other risk conflict with instruction in the back lane as the development proceeds. Um, so w- why do it prior to that instead of letting the construction get a little bit further down the road? I I know it's good to be prepared ahead of time. But I'm concerned of, you know, the the new stuff being, you know, damaged through the construction process.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, Madame Mayor, uh through Madame Mayor to Council Brmaskey. Um, we ultimately want to ensure that the lane way is constructed and the work is complete prior to that site opening because it's the only access and exit into the site. Um, it's anticipated that you know, being a two year project as the heavy equipment gets out, then you know, we can do the bur- power burial hopefully in twenty twenty four. There's no I gotta be honest and say there's no guarantee with force to schedule. We may be looking at a twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six construction. Um, and so I I think there is the uh opportunity to be in there and coordinate with the developer um and discuss some of that impacts and how we can in the delivery of the project, maybe minimize any negative impacts. At the end of the day, though, if the city invested in infrastructure and a new development comes and ultimately damages infrastructure, they are responsible to some degree to repair damage. And so we have that as well as a bit of protection, but we we don't want to put them in a predicament to say we're gonna build something and then put them in a position that they they ultimately can be causing any damage or issue. We'll work and coordinate with them as best possible to deliver it. Uh, some of the heavy equipment is largely coming off of the north and and east side of the site, so off Saint Albert Trail and Saint Anne Street. So it's not anticipated that that heavy, heavy equipment would be coming down the back lane to begin with. Uh, and with the possible consideration of the redesign of the lane way itself, it'll be a stronger structure uh that will not necessarily be meant for like a large cranes and whatnot coming down. But again, that equipment wouldn't be anticipated be coming down through that lane way anyway. So there's again, that lessened risk. Well.
Okay, and there is there any risk that the businesses in a specific stretch of area would be without power, you know, for some time in the transition?
Uh, through Madame Air, um, absolutely. There is, as site servicing is performed, there has to be a power disconnect, but all of that would be coordinated and to minimize disruption as best possible to the actual service of the to the sites.
Is there any estimate on that what would the norm is for that? How much is the downtime normally?
I honestly, I don't know. I to give you a specific example, I would I would, you know, we would be communicating with the businesses to let them know, give pre-warning. Uh, the nice thing is that it would be planned. I mean, outages happen in their unplanned whatnot, but we would have a dedicated time and service to say everything is lined up and trying to minimize that disruption. If there were opportunity as well, I I mean, I would anticipate that if there is opportunity for temporary power, then we would try and accommodate that like it might be maintain the existing overhead power until we get the site servicing kind of performed and ready that you can have the connections and and minimize that timeline between having thing, everything kind of up and running uh as you transition from one to the other. But I don't I don't know the details on that.
How far does that, you know, the that infrastructure there provide power to? Like, can you just cut it off at that end of the alley or are you going to be affecting across the street? How? What's what's the fallout from that?
My understanding is that there's the the impact is the direct adjacent businesses.
Okay. And then another question, will they be limited to access of their from their back doors like during this whole process? They just have to use the front entrance for everything? Okay. Which is a little bit tough for deliveries and stuff, so that'll be all communicated with the businesses as well then?
That's that's correct. I mean, this falls in line with any communication and, you know, service planning and and support that we can provide when we deliver any project on a roadway and adjacent, whether it be residents or businesses. We would attempt our very best to mitigate. Um, obviously, we can't we can't communicate that no impact will occur, but we'll try and minimize the disruption and keep everything kind of flowing and operating for the businesses as best possible. Uh, and give lots of time and communication and scheduling so they can be aware and nothing come as a surprise anymore.
Okay, would you have a temporary delivery lane in the front or?
That could be considered. I in that area, there is the parking, there is some no parking because there's a transit stop on the south side of Saint Anne Street in that area. But where possible, we can dedicate signage or drop off areas or delivery. Absolutely, that would all be a consideration as we work and communicate and hear feedback from some of the businesses as well. We give a we had given a notification letter of the planned project in today's presentation to council. But again, without any information regards to an actual schedule or plan for the work, um, it's hard to really communicate and say what are your concerns at this exact moment if until we get to that level of information sharing.
Okay, and the road looks straight on your plan? Is it going to be straight or are you going to have a strange little curve kind of thing just after the community hall there?
It will. I value any straight road in Saint Albert that I could maintain, so that's that's a good saying that we'll try and keep as is. We're limited again with the right of way of the lane way. So there's there's not going to be a deviation in any kind of the the design.
Okay, and then the power poles where they said is essentially allowing you that extra space, most of the space is gained on that side of the road, right? So where's the property line for the community hall? Like, is it? It's honestly almost probably touching those poles, is it not, or?
It is very close to the building itself.
Yeah, and don't you have like a right of way of where you have to be there, you know, the property line kind of thing, or you can just go right up to it?
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, what we're looking at is trying to maintain the existing hard surface um and remove the structures that are within that hard surface that are definitely within the right of way of the back lane. Um, but at the end of the day, we're not looking to impact or influence any of the on like adjacent buildings or anything. So it we're we're working in within the confines of what exists today.
No circles in there, must be. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um. The only question I have is we're doing some storm work. Not an engineer, but it's all pretty much paved in the downtown now. We're it's going to be paved after, so just wondering why we need to, is there where is anticipated storm coming from?
So it the actual, sorry, through them here, the uh the storm work is largely RMR. And so it's not anticipated to be a lot of new segments, some manhole uh replacements, and we've coordinated and collaborated with our utilities group that they've done some site inspections. And so there's um just ensuring that um, you know, again, where there might be some maybe uh pooling or ponding issues if we have to consider a J a a new infrastructure to connect to the existing system. Uh, then we'll we'll do so, but a lot of it is associated with the RMR side.
Okay, I was just sort of wondering if it was um I mean, the storm infrastructure down there is probably pretty old. And and we're experiencing heavier rains and different weather patterns. And I was wondering if that was contributing to the need for the three hundred thousand dollars in storm.
My understanding is it's not necessarily a capacity
Okay.
replacement. It's associated with condition levels.
Okay. It was just more of curiosity, so thank you. Uh, I see no more questions, so Council Mike, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. That uh engineering dash zero eight six Saint Anne street back lane improvements be approved in the amount of one million five hundred and forty thousand to be funded accordingly with five hundred and forty thousand dollars from approved operating carry forward project back lanes program, five hundred and five thousand dollars from approved capital project four two two four one one, which is our back lane program and four hundred ninety five thousand dollars to come from our capital reserve.
All right, accept that motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, as discussed by uh and presented by administration, Mr. Schick and through questions, I think it's fairly obvious that uh this back lane ha- needs to be uh uh brought up to current transportation standards, not only to probably accomplish just the increased use, but it's also um required. Basically, if you look at it, I mean, you're replacing a back lane that's probably been in existence in a part of town for decades, if not longer. I would even, I don't even know how long that back lane. So I mean, you're gonna have um issues with uh uh encroachments and building uh maybe that was built in the twenties, early thirties, having obviously presenting challenges. So there's always disruptions when construction's involved, and I know administration always tries to develop mitigation plans and they'll continue to do so. Um, so yes, businesses will be disruptive and I know um, there's been a great deal of disruption for many of the businesses there, so uh I'm I'm fairly confident administration is is very cognizant of those and will be working with them to mitigate those challenges. Uh, but there's also opportunities as identified in the back report. Um, I would I'd like to see street lighting in there as well from an obviously crime prevention protect my um perspective, excuse me. But also maybe perhaps having uh an upgraded lane will actually spur some of the growth in relation to either replacement of some of the existing buildings or maybe even growth in maybe some of the empty parking lots there as well. So um this is as identified in the background or really the only new dollars is the four four hundred ninety five thousand dollars from capital reserve. Most of the other, all the other uh money will be recoverable through uh different um uh programs that have been identified already in the motion. So that's my opening comments.
All right, anyone else on debate? Seeing none at home. Seeing none in their room, I'm gonna call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. All right. Going back to our agenda. We have uh the emergent item, which is next, which is the letter of support from the Canmore Casino. Um, I've told staff that they didn't have to pardon? Camrose, thank you. Cameras. Uh, I told staff not to prepare anything or do a presentation because I think we're familiar. For anyone watching our council meeting today, we got a request from the Camrose Casino for a letter of support to relocate in to the city of Edmonton. Um, I was ready to write that letter and then there was a few members of council that questioned it and we absolutely identified by Counsel Kilik should not be debating over email. It should be public, so it's here. Um. So the 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 gist of the conversation in my understanding is that Camrose Casino um is facing difficult times, mostly because uh the Edmonton Casino, which opened up, which actually does not supply charitable dollars to any of our charities. Uh, and then the Bear Hills one is being built. And when that when they open the doors, they they believe the competition between in the south side of Edmonton. That no one will go to cameras and it's going to close their doors likely. So they have put in a request to the A G L C to relocate into the city of Edmonton. And then again, the issue there is that Edmonton casinos can contain their charitable dollars inside the city of Edmonton. The only urban casino that I'm aware of that spends their money outside of the big cities is one casino in Calgary that does share their revenue outside. So um if Camrose shuts down, all of the charities that are currently in Camrose will fall into the Saint Albert Casino catchment area, which will lengthen the amount of time for our charities to get um into casinos. It's also from the data that I've seen through A G L C and through some of our backgrounders here. Uh, one of the lowest yielding, Saint Albert is one of the lowest yielding. I think it's around eight thousand dollars a casino people are getting. I'm looking at staff for maybe a yes or a no. But about that, um, whereas the big city casinos are getting thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars sometimes. Um. I was prepared to write this letter of support mostly um not to support a private business, namely the Camrose Casino, but to make sure that A G L C knew that we um were supportive of at casino in Edmonton, being allowed to share their revenues, their charitable revenues outside of the city of Edmonton into our into our catchment area. So that's kind of my backgrounder. Um. We have a motion ready if you guys are willing to. Can you just throw it on the screen? It's pretty much says that um council authorizes the mayor to write a letter of support um to the relocation application. Not sure if this is even going to go anywhere. Counsel Broadhead has pointed out over the weekend over email that we have been spending years trying to fix the casino model in the province of Alberta. Um, I participated on an Alberta municipalities committee that came up with recommendations. And I still think the ultimate solution is to allow for pooling of money in the province. But until that point, I just want to protect our charities. So um Counsel Kilik, I might go to you for your some of your reservations.
Certainly. Thank you, Madame Mayor. Um, it and I appreciate all of the information you've provided kind of lines up with my understanding of the the concerns as well, or the situation, I should say, not concerns, but situation. Uh, my concern is that um by supporting this, the the ultimate goal for uh that would be best for all charities in Saint Albert and others, other areas would be a broader strategy that saw um a more along the lines with our existing advocacy that we're doing with both the minister that it represents half of Saint Albert. Uh, he represents A G L C, he represents, you know, A G L C is a big um employer and business in in Saint Albert. And I my thought was that we should continue to pursue that broader strategy of uh pooling either provincially pooling all of the the uh charitable gaming revenues and sharing them equitably around the province. Uh, so that that we got rid of this large disparity and this is province wide, urban rural. Um. And uh and and fix the bigger problem and continue to advocate strongly for that rather than um bringing in a a kind of a a small solution uh which is just the the relocation of one casino into uh into the Edmonton area. My understanding, we would still be uh have a very long waitlist to to get access um to that casino. Uh, we would be still competing with all the other charities that are still competing, so it wouldn't help uh or it would have a minor improvement on our on our uh wait time potentially and a minor improvement on on the revenue share that uh we potentially could get. So uh although it sounds like fifty percent is is a big number, it's a percentage. And it's still, even at that number, is far, far less than if we were to properly have A G L C and continue to lobby A G L C for either redrawing the boundaries, sharing the total pool, um which was our our top line advocacy or sharing in some percentage, which was some of the other. There are a number of other options that were uh presented and have been lobbied for hard. And and I recognize, Madame Mary, you were on uh Alberta municipalities when that resolution was first brought forward. And it totally made sense when I looked back at it and said, that's what we should continue to to focus on. Um. Al- also recognizing that this casino would probably not get built for two years. Um, that's a normal kind of construction uh period. So rather than kind of get in the middle of things, it 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 just struck me that we should continue to advocate to our local M L A and and uh who is the the M L A in charge of of this overall strategy? And and I believe he's on the record of committing to to doing this broader uh review, so that was my perspective of when this was first brought forward rather than treating it kind of a one off uh scenario.
Okay. Um. I see no one wanting to speak. Counsel Jolly, go ahead.
Yeah, just really briefly, I I wanted to say that I actually support both perspectives that have been brought forward and really I want to do both. So um, you know, in the short term, you know, like you were said, this is absolutely a short term kind of Band-Aid solution to protect Saint Albert nonprofits. Uh, I I'm supportive of that. And then the long term strategy is critical in in making sure that our charities have equitable access to casino funding. I know, you know, as someone who spends my days with a a city, a nonprofit based out of city of Edmonton, you know, I I think of the amount of funding we get from casinos uh compared to you know, charities just a few kilometers north of us in Saint Albert and and it's really shocking. You know, charities just a few kilometers north of us in St. Albert and, and it's really shocking. So um. Really, I'm happy to support both uh the, these strategies uh going forward. Thanks, uh Mayor for bringing this word.
Yeah, for sure. I don't, and honestly, one does not preclude the other. You can support cameras in the relocation and still. Advocate hard. Um. And, and I think the, the difference is. What you're talking about, Counsel Kilik, is a, a bigger, broader strategy is a ministerial decision from uh, from. Treasury and, and finance and, and Minister Nally. The relocation of Camrose is an AGLC board decision, very kind of different uh partners that we're advocating to. Counsel Hughes.
Um, maybe, Mary, you sort of know more about it than I did when this came forward. So. I have one question you may be able to answer or not, and that like. The concern is that this casino is moving because of a new casino building nearby. And so the concern about business impacting it. But then that's the same potential problem with our current casino is that do we actually know that? There is enough support to handle two casinos close to each other. That would also, what, what will be the impact to our current facilities? Um, and do they actually have that? That's the thing, like when they came forward, I'm like, I don't know the location. I don't know about really the impact it will have to it. If it actually could potentially close down the current St. Albert Casino to have that happen. We don't even. Ha- I don't have the details of, of trying to do this as opposed to simply blanketly supporting it. Do you have that information or do we don't have it yet?
The casino location that Camrose is requesting is on the south side of Edmonton.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And um. And it does, it, what it will do is it will continue to take the. Charitable organizations from the current Camrose Casino. So it, it's not that the catchment areas are changing. If it closes. Then those charities in the Camrose area will have nowhere to go other than the St. Albert Casino. So it, it, it ju- if it closes, we're in trouble. If it stays open or if it moves, we stay the same essentially is what I'm understanding. Is that right? Yeah. Trevor and Monty in the room.
I, I think as far as, as, as I'm aware, like um. If it closes, that is the potential negative impact.
There's an unknown there, yeah.
Speak to what happens if they move. I'd have to do some more research on that.
Okay. That's my only thing was just the, the details of this was a little um fuzzy for me, but so. You might talk me into saying yes after all, Mayor. That's it. Thank you.
The interesting thing is um. I'd suggested that another location other than the south side of Edmonton would be Strathcona. Um, because they do not have a casino, but they actually have a standing council motion to never allow a casino into their municipality. Yet their charities go to other municipalities and raise money. And I find that a little disingenuous. I'll work on that. It's, yeah. I mean, casinos come with their issues, right? But we, our charities really honestly need them. So. Anyone else have any comments or want to put a motion forward? Vote Counsel Remanski's question. Nope. We're kind of, we don't have a motion, but we're kind of just having a conversation. So.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to ask um administration, Madam Mayor, uh. I- i- is this dual-pronged uh strategy? Of advocate, my, my concern is that if we advocate on behalf. Of uh the Camrose Casino moving to AGLC. They will, will say, oh, oh, okay, well, we've done what you asked. Um, if. If it got approved. Uh, and then they would say, but now we, we're no longer going to be looking at this broader. Uh, strategy. It's, it's kind of like, well, we've given what you asked for. Um, as, as a Band-Aid solution, like can.
I think. Yeah, I think that's a hard one for them to answer. It's trying to ask them to put them in their minds of.
Mr. Dooley can certainly chime in. Um, I, I don't know, I guess is, is the base. As the mayor noted though. We're, we're talking about two different, though related um organizations, right? And so one is about, it's kind of an operational decision. Uh, and the other is more philosophically about revenue sharing across the, the entirety of the program. Um, and so. From an administrative perspective, I, you know, I don't know if one begets the other. Per se, um, I would submit to you that uh, you know, as we look at it, we certainly don't want to see a degradation to our charities in the short term. But administration believes the solution as, as you've already mentioned is on a more equitable model in the longer term.
Would, would it be possible that, that a letter is worded such a way that says. While we're supporting cameras, we're also believe that long-term.
Yeah.
Holistic look i- is still.
Well, yeah, we can remind them once again of, of what we, of our, of our resolution.
Yeah, because the, the letter that was drafted, it was quite. You know, tight to, to just the cameras move.
Yeah, and that was their suggested letter. I, I will ask Melissa and Christina and maybe Trevor and Monte to, to finesse it to, to St. Albert words. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, because I think if we can. You know, say yes to this piece, but our longer preferred strategy is. A, a more holistic look would be, I, I would be comfortable with that.
And, and just uh.
And for Counsel Hughes and Counsel Jolly, who aren't here, there's lots of nodding going on at the administrative level. That, we can do that, we can do that.
So, and yeah, like, like counsel, uh, you've approved your, your existing advocacy priorities where. A more equitable uh distribution of casino revenues is, is one. And so we would strive to sort of focus on that outcome. And then. The other piece of information I'll just add again is that Minister Nally did submit a, a letter to Mayor Heron. Um, last month indicating uh plans to sort of revisit the uh. The uh distribution of, of charitable gaming revenues. So I think we'll, we'll just. Ask for an update too on uh sort of timing when that's scheduled to occur uh later this year. So.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Well, with all that, do you want to make the motion?
Uh, that the mayor be authorized to write a letter in support of the Camrose Resort Casino AGLC Facility Relocation Application.
Right, kind of mixed our questions with debate. Do you have anything to add?
I, I think uh good debate. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, all the backgrounder and I, I, I really like the kind of dual-pronged strategy. We do have a. Maybe a quick win in front of us that could help uh immediately to improve. The gaming revenues to St. Albert charities. Um, so that's a, a good. Potential quick win. And as long as the letter supports that. Um, the longer-term strategy that be pursued at the ministerial level, then I, I think we'll have covered both bases and. And have both a quick win solution and a long-term solution. So I, very much supportive of that.
I don't see anyone else on debate, but I'll just say to all of you that this was the right way to do this publicly and in a meeting. Ending the agenda at it as an emergent item. And I think through that conversation, we've identified this two-pronged. I don't think that was really clear before. So. Uh, appreciate it also. I'll support this. Anything to close?
Uh, great conversation and look forward to the vote.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are into two council motions. Um. Counsel Jolly, yours is first. Ten point one, request for reconsideration.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oops, did I miss something?
Yes, civic agencies. Civic and externally.
Oh, I did miss the civic agencies. Okay, thank you. Uh, this is our time of the month to update council on what's been going on. So who wants to start? Counsel Kilik.
Uh, yeah, fairly straightforward. Um, from a. A Edmonton Salutes perspective, we did have our, our mandated yearly um organizational. Uh, and membership orientation meeting scheduled uh because it is mandated to do it every year. Unfortunately, we had a number of people that were away, so that um got canceled and we now will be rescheduling it over the summer. Uh, so that's uh kind of a. A bit of a missed opportunity, but it means we, we still have to get it done. Uh. Mayor and I had the privilege and opportunity to uh attend the. June twenty-seventh change of command uh out at the base and it was uh well-attended. Um, fun event, actually, uh a lot of serious ceremony, but it was also a fun event. And it was well-attended by other mayors uh from around the uh, from around the region. And our next upcoming meeting is uh June twenty-eighth. Uh, for our, our last Edmonton Salutes um meeting. And I, I do have a. An announcement I'd like to make to your recognition, just.
You can do it now. Go ahead.
Oh, I can do it now.
Oh, no.
Afterwards.
Let's do that at um. Eleven. Yeah, the agenda. Okay. Counsel Mackay.
Uh, outside of a few board governance issues that I had to deal with, uh, from Aero Utilities, uh, everybody is else on summer.
Awesome. Uh, Counsel Jolly.
Uh, it's summer, um, but the Governance Committee from Homeland Housing did meet last week, so I chair that. Um, just going over some policies. We kind of review policies every three, four years. Um. Nothing significant to report. It's just kind of a refresh.
All right, Counsel Hughes.
I've got some exciting news. So we went to the Waste Management um Minimization Committee meeting. And this time it was a presentation about um. An organization called Sustain and they're actually looking at building a waste management facility near Wataasquan. And it would be where you can actually, it will sort everything and then everything is, some stuff is recycled. A lot of the stuff can be used for fuel. Other things can be put into um bioenergizer and it's all sorted. And the good news about this facility is that. It would require nothing for investment from any community that's involved in it. They will build it and they will operate it at no. Cost to, like, they're not asking us for thirty million or anyone else for any money. Um, what they all, what they just want is garbage. Um, and so they're looking at, they need a hundred thousand um. Tons, I guess, or measure a hundred um per year. So they're looking at Wataasquins running areas for that and. We would still be optional. I mean, it'd be a really long drive, but it, I think it's something that'd be worth considering to look at. They're looking at getting their tipping fees to be the same or potentially lower depending on the total buy-in as what is currently being charged. So it would be an opportunity for us to actually handle this waste situation at not additional cost to residents. And no capital investment from the city to actually make this happen. Uh, so they're looking into this and they'll have a better idea of whether or not they're able to move forward by the fall. But it is certainly exciting and, and also they have, already have a facility operating in Nova Scotia. So if we thought we actually wanted to do it, some people have already gone there to look and see how the facility works. Um, it might be something we may have to consider. I realize that normally I wouldn't say let's all travel there, but. If there's something that we thought we wanted to redirect, it might be an option. To look at to make sure that it actually is what it claims it can do. And it's been operational um for almost two years right now in Nova Scotia. They also said that all the technology they're using is like ninety percent of it is like. Well-known technology. There's not a bunch of new questionable things that could go wrong with it. And they have taken the um element in Nova Scotia and then. Figured out how to just do it better. A lot of things they have are already duplicates to make sure, for example, it doesn't stop running, et cetera. Um, and they are only looking at building two per year, like as they're moving forward. So they have one Wataasquan and there's another one, I believe in Texas. They're looking at doing. Um, before they would go further to other locations. They don't want to build too quickly and um. Kind of burn themselves out. So anyway, that came forward and that was pretty exciting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just let you know, Counsel Hughes, I don't know if you've heard or been watching the news, but. There's two um big waste energies in Alberta right now, VARM and Sustain. Sustain's kind of in the south, VARM is in the Edmonton region. They're already building their a hundred. Ton facility with, with carbon capture. Um, our whole region is just under, uh. Mr. Fletcher, do you know the tonnage that we create in the region? It's just under a hundred, maybe seventy-five.
Um, the, the entire region is, is significant, but to achieve a hundred thousand tons, you need Edmonton.
So we've already met with VARM. You have uh Mr. Fletcher and there's a conversation happening already with them about. Hopefully taking some of St. Albert's until they reach capacity in Edmonton and then maybe building a second plant somewhere in this region. So. Uh, you, I don't know if you want to add to that.
No, no, that's exactly, uh, you, you've articulated correctly, Mayor. There's, there's some excess capacity based on the agreement with Edmonton. St. Albert is an option for that. Uh, what I would say equally though is, is we'll ensure this is on the radar of our, our waste management folks as we look at options holistically and.
Yeah.
Come forward.
But cool and exciting conversations, yeah, happening.
Yeah. Yeah, Edmonton was not willing to commit anything towards this one in Wataasquan, obviously, because they've already got. Yeah, um, it's amazing how many people want your garbage, but.
Yeah.
It did look like it was actually uh. A feasible thing where they, they do have plans for all of the material, which would be great. Um, the other thing is just the uh internal audit committee is um. The pro, the audit for the um cybersecurity is moving forward and we'll be having an update about the final results in September. So. That's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My uh committees are on summer high and have been scheduled for early September.
Okay, Counsel Bermansky.
Thank you. Uh, not much from committees this time of year. Uh, we did have the uh short meeting for, with the uh surgeon. Um, SRWA Watershed Alliance. And uh they did uh lose out on a grant prior, so we just kind of talked about. Uh, programs going forward and what um, what direction. Um, the people in the room feel that is most important for the group to focus on. And uh, we had uh discussions about uh. Maintaining the water through um. Dust control, uh calcium chlorides in the, in the rivers and salt management. And we have a whole bunch of. Plans going forward for the new uh, the next meeting and for the next round. Uh, and the continuation of water quality monitoring, education awareness, uh team building with the group actually getting right out. Uh, in the water areas and finding uh problem areas and restor- restoration. So. Again, good work there, but um. Need a few more grants from the, from the federal government. And then with the arts committee, I just want to mention that we did do the uh, the new calendar. Um, although it's not totally art, it's, it's our. Um, arts focus, uh, the Arden Theater event last week and the new schedule for the next year is really, really, really great. And we've got. Plaza series started and there is an event at the art gallery on uh this Thursday evening. So if. Everyone wants to get out and support that, it was a short meeting, but uh just focusing on the art over summer and that was about it. Oh, we did one other tour with the environmental committee and I may have mentioned this before, but just to refocus again. Uh, we looked at um, you know, we went to a, a property that had a um. A heat pump to see how those actually work with the en- environment. Uh, we went out to community gardens and, and saw how they've had their. Um, their water collected and they've got all kinds of. Collector containers all attached to each other. So there's, you know, a lot of things going on in the community that people aren't even aware of, but so many people focused on. Good ideas and, and just going forward with them. So. We do focus on water conservation, but there's a huge amount in the community that are doing the same. And I want to commend everyone for all that great environmental work. The regular citizens focus on that.
Okay, that is all our civic updates. Now we can go to council motions. Or does anyone need a break? Yeah, okay, we'll take a, a, a break till three o'clock. And stretch our legs and we'll get back. Here in twelve minutes. Jumps back in. She's there, okay. Back to work. All right, Councillor Jolly, we're on to your motion when I get you to read it in.
Do you want me to read it in? Like, I don't know that I'm gonna move it.
Just read it so we know we're talking about, I'm not accepting it yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Bear with me, my computer crashed and Cheryl, do you mind popping that into the chat?
It's in the chat.
Thank you. So that admin offer space for nominal value at a year-round city-owned facility to the St. Albert Assisted Independent Living Home Foundation sale home with the option for a seasonal facility preferred by sale home for the purpose of operating a food service establishment which complies with provincial regulation and operates within the city's hours of service and that sale home be exempt from the community capital grant application timeline requirements in order to enable sale home to apply for grant funding for this food service establishment on as, as needed basis.
All right, did you hesitate because you had some questions?
Yeah, no, I had, I had, I had a question about the, the legal opinion about kind of being offside of a few, few of the different rules. So I guess Mr. Fletcher or Ms. Caulfield. I'm wondering if we're also offside of those rules for the other facilities that we're offering at nominal value to other nonprofits or charities in St. Albert.
Councillor Jolly, thanks. I'm not aware of actually other leases, I'm aware of other licenses. And that's the difference, kind of the crux of it in, in the legal sense. I'm not sure if someone's here to comment from a rec and parks perspective or a community services perspective, but from a legal perspective, there's a big difference between leasing spaces and licensing spaces. And I know we have licenses for nominal value for community groups for various things. But a lease kind of falls within the trade agreements, it's a different beast in, in the legal context, so I'll stop there. I don't know if you have any more follow-up questions.
So I guess I'm thinking specifically of the St. Albert daycare and, and VASA, so.
Yeah, and maybe I'll ask if Ms. Podlobny, councillor, wants to jump in, but you are correct, we do have leases with community groups, they are longstanding leases. And so, you know, I certainly can't comment on, apologies this time, we can do some research as to, to what the calculus was when those were put into place. Ms. Podlobny, did you want to offer any commentary?
Yeah, thanks to the Chair to Councillor Jolly. I can give you a high-level overview that we do have a number of leases with nominal partners at this time. With regard to your two specific instances you, you offered is your inquiry, the one is the St. Albert daycare, it is not a nominal lease actually, it's a quasi-market value lease, so it's a little bit different. I would have to turn it over to Ms. Wilkie to answer on behalf of the VASA, because I don't have familiarity with that lease. But to Mr. Fletcher's point, if we wanted to compile some information for you on our existing nominal lease partners, we do have a number of them within the city. But they are longstanding and very historical, I would say, prior to some of the legislation currently in place, but we'd have to pull that for you to get you all that information separately.
And specific to VASA, again, a longstanding, a nominal lease that we have, was renegotiated before, while I was not within the department, so I don't know the specific details on when the lease was renegotiated. But during our last review, their work did align with the nominal lease agreement at that time. It will be up for renewal again, at which point we would once again assess whether they continue to qualify for that lease agreement.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, I'll bring it forward, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, before I accept it, the organ takes some questions, Councillor Mackay.
Yeah, either to administration or perhaps Councillor Jolly. The backgrounder identifies that additional information would be required from the particular organization. And then it said that any other further meetings to discuss plans and options were declined by the organization. So I guess question is to administration, was there any reason given as to why they would not want to continue the conversation?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Danielle to provide the comment as it was her team who had conducted the arrangement.
After the Chair to Councillor Mackay, we did reach out to the organizer to have a dialogue to just further understand their business model a bit more detail. At that time, I can't give the motive to why, but she declined a meeting with us at that point. I think that that is one of the major gaps is we just need some more information and understanding of the organization, the mandate, the operating model and such in order to be able to make an informed recommendation to council is really where we're lacking some base information.
I, I just offered to Councillor Jolly, would you have any background information as to why the organization would reach out and then not want additional assistance or any?
No, I mean, I think you were CC'd on all the emails that I was on, so.
Yeah, no, I.
So are they aware about this motion today, Councillor Jolly?
They are, yeah. The last I heard from her was that yeah, I'm actually surprised no one's here.
Were they specifically invited?
Just by myself, I don't know if Ledge reached.
Not, not by administration.
Not by, okay, yeah, I'm surprised too. Keep going, sorry.
No, that was just one of my, I mean, questions. I mean, I perhaps have other comments later, but that was my only question.
All right, Councillor Killick.
Yeah, just in, in terms of the requested exemption from the capital grant portion. My understanding, the guidelines say that a charity must be in good standing for five years. Is, is that the piece you're acting, asking to be exempt from or what, what was?
No, just the timelines, there's two intakes. But kind of the intent of that motion was, it's like, hey, if they're like midway through half the intakes, bring it to CSAC and have them evaluate it. Kind of like they would for anything else. But that's the only portion that I was proposing to, to waive.
Okay, but in light of the broader picture, then that would also be an exception that normally our rule would say a charity must be in good standing for five years before we can consider, so that would be another potential hiccup if, if they did come forward.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what their, their status is.
Councillor Broadhead.
Yeah, just, just interesting to me, so the idea of offering it to sale was because they came forward, did they ask? Okay, fair enough. What would be the opportunity if we were to put out an RFP to all sort of not-for-profits to see how they would respond? I, I note that that's one of the risks of perceived favoritism dissatisfaction among other nonprofit groups. How significant do you think that would be?
Yeah, thank you, Councillor. I'll ask both perhaps Danielle Podlobny and Elizabeth Wilkie to offer their commentary. I mean, and in fairness, they did come forward and ask, right, and no one else came forward with that specific ask. Follow-up was obviously problematic, but, you know, there's lots of deserving organizations out there and I think that the trick is to try and define some, some equity in terms of, of opportunity. I guess that's a philosophy that underpins our approach, but I will offer it now to Danielle and Elizabeth, perhaps to offer comment on the potential risk.
You're the Chair to Councillor Broadhead. I would say the world of social procurement is something we haven't really dipped our toes into, but I think as a general philosophy, when we offer an RFP as we do to commercial entities, it would be to offer equitable opportunity as a philosophical kind of approach to all of our not-for-profit sector, not presuming that any one of them wouldn't be interested. I can't speak to how many would be and maybe Ms. Wilkie can give some more information. Her, her strength is definitely more in the social procurement end than, than possibly mine, but that is our kind of philosophical assessment is to give equal access and opportunity for best partnership opportunities, but also most successful models that align to that service delivery as well.
Fair enough. It's, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think if we're going to open this up, you know, good on sale for bringing this forward and offering themselves as a as an interested party to do this kind of work and, and it, it sort of speaks to what we want to do in our community for our not-for-profits is to bring them and give them opportunities to be successful, but we want to do that in a sort of a holistic, well-reasoned way. So I note in your, in the report, current progress with social can't even speak. Current progress with social procurement and you list, you know, six, five points there. How, how is that coming along? Twenty twenty-six, couple of years away.
Thank you for that question. So social procurement within the organization is part of finances, Sustainable Procurement Directive. And all of the work associated with that directive has currently been paused, including the social procurement component for the purposes of completing the. For um, the purposes of completing the um. Procurement audit recommendations and implementations, which I'm sure my colleagues could speak to in in greater detail. So we're in a holding pattern on the social side. And and if you would mind and just indulging me for a second, one of your previous questions was. What if we were to go to RFP? I think our first challenge is to ensure we have a space, which is the bigger problem, not necessarily the social procurement part, but a space for it to happen. And would there be other organizations that would be upset? Well, I can't speak to. If there would be organizations, I do know this is not the first time that it's been tossed around. As an opportunity, and in fact, we've seen it within our facilities previously. If you remember Peggy's Cove in St. Albert Place. It was previously started as a Canadian Institute for the Blind Initiative um, as a uh, social enterprise component.
Okay, fair enough. Uh. My heart is here. I just don't know whether we're ready to do it or not. Anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll listen to arguments for sure.
Councillor McKay.
Yeah, I guess. So when um, we did the first. Kind of iteration of repairs of Fountain Park Pool, we actually took out the food service delivery that we did have. The lease basically wasn't renewed and is there any? Kind of sense of a kitchen or a restaurant or anything in there anymore?
Yeah, I certainly could let uh, Ms. Podlobny speak to how that came about. Um, the short answer to your question is is. No, not food service, but vending contracts is is the preferable way. Go ahead, Danielle.
Uh, through the Chair to councillor McKay. So um, after the pandemic closures had occurred in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we did have our leaseholder return to the facility. At the time that we closed down Fountain Park for the renovation, they did not return at that time. When we brought in Alberta Health Services to look at the space and the amount of funding required. To update that space to meet current AHS regulations, it was quite significant. So we did a bit of a regional analysis of what's offered and currently in standalone pools of the region. What's the current state? Our cost benefit analysis on return and made a choice to go to vending. With that, with the new warranty work that's underway, the kitchen is um, no longer in place. It would have required a major overhaul in order to be um, um, marketed as a lease opportunity for um. A food provision service again, so it would have required a major subsidy of information or subsidy of uh, of funding to get it up up and running. So it is now um, being turned into vending. It's in the middle of construction right now.
So with that information. Whoever wanted to, or or if we decided that we wanted to permit. This type of use, it certainly couldn't be a kind of a food service restaurant facility as is. That would require a significant capital investment. But I mean, somebody could uh, offer. Some other types of kind of. Food service. I mean, not as long as it kind of met within AHS guidelines, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, I think that's that's the issue would be AHS guidelines. Again, I defer to to Ms. Podlobly on that, but we we do currently have. Contract for a provision of vending services in that space right now.
Correct, and it it, we have closed off the access point to the space, so it really doesn't function in terms of food food service provision at all at this time.
All right, thanks. That answers my question. Thanks.
Uh, councillor Jolly, you have another question?
Yeah, and just to to councillor McKay's um, question, the motion doesn't specify Fountain Park, so I'll just throw that out there.
It's anywhere.
Yeah, and that was intentional. Um, my question is probably to Ms. Wilkie. I think as a lot of people in the room know, I've got an IR kind of waiting to go about what the status of the social procurement um, plan is. Is that IR likely to result in kind of anything more than than the update that you just provided?
No, it's, it truly is dependent on um. Colleagues throughout the organization getting through the work that they may need to get through. Before we introduce another layer, we are building a solid foundation to put these extra steps on top, and we all recognize. Within sustainable procurement, but social procurement, how much benefit and community impact can come from it when we can start to um, look to um, try. Provide scoring criteria associated with uh, organizations that are giving back in our community, that are hiring within our community, that are supporting diverse populations. Um, and that are looking at endeavors like uh, social enterprise to continue that community impact story. But it takes time and people to focus on it to get it right, and those people right now are focused on another component that it touches all of our operations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions, councillor Jolly, so I'll accept your motion and let you go ahead on debate.
Thank you. Um, so I I don't know if Sale is is able to do this. Haven't seen their business plan, but I would love to have those discussions. You know, St. Albert. Has a reputation for having more policies than everyone else. Um, and I know the intent of our policies is to ensure accountability. The the unfortunate result is we're sometimes backed in into a corner like this, that we can't even have the the discussions. With organizations like Sales who who come forward with with proposals like this. Ultimately, I want people and community to be consistently more important than numbers or revenue. And and that that is going to happen with the the social procurement. But in the meantime, you know, we we know. That our own community needs assessment states that persons with disabilities are one of the groups identified as being underserved within St. Albert. So, you know, when. When we have an opportunity to to talk about a project that would build community partnerships. Increase employment opportunities for persons with disabilities and show our residents that we live by our our stated values of inclusion. I think we have to have those conversations, even if it's in conflict with some of our policies. You know, I, I I'm not sure what I'm going to do in terms of that question about social procurement. We first were introduced to that back in twenty twenty-one, I believe. But, you know, right now, we're we're already offering spaces at nominal value to a couple of different organizations. Um, and I would love to see support for this. And, you know, let staff kind of figure out the details about whether it's feasible. Yes, HS requirements are are required. Yes, a business plan is is required and Sale would really have to step up. But without giving this direction to staff, they can't even have those conversations because of the way our policies are set up, which is why it requires a council motion. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else on debate? Councillor Bremanski.
Thank you. Um, and I, you know, I respect this this group for coming forward and the intent, and they're new. That's the thing. They're they're just, they haven't really. Grown yet. They don't have a business plan. They don't have a plan. They need to communicate with administration to even have a plan. And to leave this wide open that administration offers spaces. Most nonprofits would go in with the mindset of of uh, developing um, an equitable. Business plan for a future, for being able to support themselves in the future, for finding the correct location. Many of those things and 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 I, you know, I do appreciate the intent of this, but. You need the data to be able to go forward. And um, I think it's important that um, you know, Sale would communicate with administration and provide more. And their plans um, for an intent in the future. But as it sits right now, um, it seems quite premature to me because we don't in fact have a business. You know, any proof of a business success uh, from the group yet, or what their plan for success would be. So I hope that they would come forward and speak with administration in the future for. You know, in more clarity and um, and intent and and um, I appreciate every, I appreciate groups like this that. Help to the best of their abilities, but it has to be done to the best of their ability to to be successful. Thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
Uh, thank you. Um. I I have some serious concerns with this motion. I feel like this is. Well, I've been accused of micromanaging before. This seems to be the extreme. The fact that somebody came forward and said that they're willing to do it, regardless of the social benefit behind it, we have no idea of any due diligence. And the organization hasn't volunteered that information on follow up. In spite of administration trying to get that. So until the due diligence has been completed, I don't think that we should really be discussing this. We really need to understand even. The business model, understand whether or not it's viable, the really risks associated with this before we would move forward. And then from there, also have an RFP available so that other similar organizations would also have the equal opportunity to discuss it. If we had a location available, which at this point, staff hasn't even confirmed there's a location available. So. We would need to figure out the location. We would need to figure out the due diligence, and we'd also have to leave it open to figure out the. The organization that should be chosen and not simply just the first one that stepped up and contacted us by email. So um, I do believe that the word premature that councillor Bremanski used is correct, that this, until we actually identify quite a few of the unknowns and do proper diligence, I think. That this um, motion is uh, premature to even have on the discussion board. Thank you.
Councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I. You know, it's interesting when we uh, when we're faced with doing something new and innovative. That sort is um, outside the norm. And yet it's uh, it's of such good intent. So how do you start the conversation? Sometimes you throw out a motion like this to to get the conversation started. I I too have reservations on on. Just saying to say, oh, yeah, we're going to do this for you and we'll make it happen, uh, because. There's some significant questions I think we have to ask and and wrestle to the ground before we can actually. Be successful in doing such an enterprise like this. But without motions like this and without raising the question, they'll never get asked and answered. So. So I appreciate um. I appreciate the motion, but I also appreciate the, you know, the um, articulation of the of the problems as well. But if you don't, uh, if you don't ask the question, if you don't work through the issues, you'll never arrive at the answer. So. Anyway, uh, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this, but uh. I've enjoyed the conversation and the read, by the way, on the background. I appreciated that.
Anyone else on debate?
I'll jump in. I cannot vote against this. It's just like, it's it's not within me to not support this motion. I've always been such a huge advocate for um, inclusive hiring. For Sale themselves, and that was long before I even met Gabriel, my stepson with Down syndrome, but um. Rotary does such a amazing amount of work with employment for uh, developmental delays. I realize this is, you know, maybe cart before the horse or backwards or or and just, but this is where council comes into play. This is where we. Express our values as a community and um. It it's a difficult one. I think this would be so much easier if Sale had responded to the to the request. But. In my thinking, a vote against this motion would somehow indicate in our community that we don't support this kind of endeavor. And a vote in favor of it says we support it, although not perfect. It is our values, and I hope it it sends a message that we want to push social procurement forward is and um. And and live by what we say. So councillor Jolly, I'll let you close.
Thank you, and I agree with everyone. You know, councillor Hughes, I absolutely agree. This is micromanaging, and and it's because we have seventy policies when we should have ten. Really is my perspective on that. You know, councillor Broad had the comment that innovation is really tricky because we have to um, look outside of the boxes that that we've set up for ourselves. And, you know, whether Sale is able to come up with the the plan and the permits to to make this happen is one question. That's that's something that really is on their plates, but I would love to have that discussion. I know, you know, from the last couple of years at at my day job, it's like, yes, we've had to gone through the process, go through the process of getting those HS permits to to serve food and. And I know what that looks like, and and it's not easy. But I think it's worthwhile kind of giving them the opportunity to do that. And I would absolutely love to see our policies updated so that we prioritize social procurement and um, and these types of innovative. Programs. Um, but in the meantime, I I hope we get enough support to just continue these discussions rather than shut them down. Thanks. That's all I have.
Off of the vote. Got them all. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with councillor. Sorry, skips away with Mayor Hare and councillor Broadhead and councillor Jolly in favor. Onto the next one, which is, I think, a councillor Killick motion. I'll get you to read it in.
That the asset management policy CPNE dash O seven be amended by adding the following clause to the standard selection of the policy. Stakeholder engagement may be considered in determining social value, which would include special events to influence the prioritization of future RMR program. Levels of service.
So that's the alternate motion.
That's uh, alternate number two, yes.
All right, before I accept it. I will uh, open it up for questions. Anyone have any questions? Councillor Jolly.
Thank you, and this kind of goes along with the last motion. So um. In terms of adding these kind of social values onto our our priorities. How would administration in terms of workload go about defining what this means and how it's weighted in? In making recommendations about priorities? It's a big question.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. That is a big question. Um, and so perhaps I'll ask uh, owner of the policy, uh, specific as we look at asset management, um, Ms. Donnie George to start.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you, um, councillor Jolly for that question through the chair to councillor Jolly. Um, the way the alternative motion is worded. Provides no timelines in implementing this. If there were timelines, that would probably be easier to answer the question that you just had. Because as you suggested, the social side of the social benefit of special events in that in this particular case. That is on the on the program list of administration's list to look into. Um, in fact, I think it's. Planning to be uh, on staff's plate starting this fall, and then how long it's going to take may take a few months to a year. So in terms of timelines, that would have been ideal for this amendment amended policy with the, I guess. If I were to suggest Q four or twenty twenty-six would have been ideal if the as a qualifier for the motion to take effect of all those implications. So. With that, I would probably ask Danielle, um. They were looking into the social uh, benefit of special events in their program list and maybe probably probably can add add some timeline indications that might help.
Uh, through the chair to to, uh, I think it was councillor Killick, sorry. We're, we're just investigating and again dipping our toes into the water of social values and how you determine value of some of these things that are maybe not as quantifiable. So it it is something that we're looking at as administration is how do we quantify some of these value pieces that um. Events or programs bring to our community that you can't quantify um, as easily. So it's not something I have a a distinct answer for, but it is something that we've um, engaged a little bit of conversation with other municipalities, and we are looking. At how we could potentially move that forward um, as administration for St. Albert.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my my next question is probably to councillor Killick. Would you consider amending your motion just to say, you know, and that uh, an update be. Provided to council no later than Q one twenty twenty-six or something like that? Just so that it it doesn't kind of fall fall off the radar.
It was my understanding in the backgrounder, when it says future state RMR program prioritization, that they have a whole big project. Uh, and I I, this was one of my questions I was going to ask administration for confirmation. But it's it's on page thirty-eight of fifty-three in in our package. Um, and it states that city continues asset management. Journey asset management ties into asset management strategy, and then there's decision-making process around. This that that forms the the um. Total view or review of how uh, assets are managed and RMR, et cetera, et cetera. And that was under the S SAMP umbrella. Now, the timeline for that councillor Jolly was twenty-five to. For staged implementation in the backgrounder, it says staged implementation from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. So I was simply going to say that my motion supports it lining up with. The timeline that was proposed and the overall process that was um. Holistic process that's underway right now under asset management. The timeline that was proposed and the overall process that was um holistic process that's underway right now under asset management. I I wasn't putting in a timeline for an update. I was going along basically with what was in the background or in the timeline stated there.
So you're not concerned about, you know, that project getting delayed and this kind of getting pushed out or forgotten? I I just know from experience that sometimes that happens.
Uh I I guess I would be concerned, but uh I'm willing to to take the background or information at its at face value, so.
Okay, no other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh Counsel McKay, you're up next.
Thanks to administration. Uh in relation to, and I read it in the backgrounder. And that maybe it was in some inferred in some of the answer and also some of the comments by Ms. George, but isn't there a dollar figure required? Uh in relation to finding between sixty and hundred thousand dollars or something like that, or is one. Supposing that if we wanted to move it ahead faster, then we would have to identify dollars.
Through the chair to Counsel McKay, um if you read the backgrounder, right now we have for the twenty twenty six operating dollars, we have slated about sixty thousand dollars to. Take a look at the policy and to incorporate not just the special events. There are certainly gaps in the current policy as we were driving deep into the maturity journey of asset management. So instead of piecemealing it, we were planning to bring a policy amendment holistically. Um in alignment with the other documents that was mentioned to SAMP and the AMS, which is very critical. That that those are internal documents that talk to each other and also to the policy. So all three needs to be aligned for us to really tangibly move forward. So the idea was. Okay, we need sixty thousand dollars to hire an external consultant because they have done this time and time again with other municipalities. Now the jurisdiction, so we can learn from them and bring the best of everything to that. So twenty twenty six is a timeline if council desires to or concern about. That timeline of twenty six, you can definitely bring it forward with additional funding that can be approved um subsequent to this motion in front of you.
So I'm a little confused. I I I think what we need, Donnie or Bill, is a yes or no answer. If this motion passes, are we pulling sixty thousand dollars out of the stabilization reserve?
Not this year, no.
Okay. And you were planning to to do this work?
This work was planned through twenty twenty six, that's correct, um to to do. This, I I guess maybe I'll back up. So the the um the asset management evolution in the city of St. Albert. Uh I would offer you, we're we're sort of at the the front end of it, and this is this is a journey. Uh that's going to take us a number of years to reach a full level of maturity. Please feel free, Donnie, to to chime in on this. There's a lot of work going on to it. So um what. You know, the interpretation of alternative two is as we go through this journey. Um we're looking at the the identification of sort of that social component, right, as it relates to events that would be incorporated. Holistically uh into the calculus that allows us to go forward. And so that right now, um that deep dive work is forecast for twenty twenty six, right? Which we could incorporate this into uh under the current plan with with essentially no additional um. Uh little additional effort, and I never say never. Um bringing it forward, if you wanted us to do it this year or next year, um then we're going to have to front-end load the funding, which.
Okay.
Changes it a little bit. That that helps, Mayor. I don't know. Uh Ms. George, did I did I?
Absolutely. Yeah, you nailed it. Thank you. And it's not just the social procurement side of things. When you look at the policy. Recent in uh council measures that we have discussed over the last few months includes climate adaptation. So sustainability policies, accessibility policies and inclusivity, all of that needs to be. Comprehensive understood and brought forward. So there are additional gaps that we would be, we are planning to address as part of the policy amendment.
Okay, but it from Counsel Kilik's motion, he's pushing it forward to this year. And is that not correct? Because it says in the background. That under alternative two. That sixty thousand dollars will have to come out of stabilization reserve. It's on page seven of eight or page forty two of our package.
If I may clarify, uh I don't think Counsel Kilik followed exactly the alternative to motion. Alternative motion has two parts. One is inclusion of the special events in the policy. Within a Q four twenty twenty five timeline and there is a sixty thousand dollars if you were to advance it to twenty five. The way the motion is worded now, the the motion on the floor, it doesn't specify any timelines and having listened to Counsel Kilik explanation. He's fine with us dealing with it as part of the normal cars.
And that's is that your intention then? Okay, so not not this year, not bring the new policy in next week or whatever. Okay, just make it sure. Thank you.
Just to follow up then.
Yeah.
I mean, alter, this sounds like this work was going to happen anyways. Isn't this motion a little bit redundant?
Well, I I think, so this work would have happened. Um. The inclusion of events specifically into this work was not guaranteed to happen without this motion. That is not something that we'd been discussing um until uh it was brought forward.
So I mean, earlier in the background, it does mention that. It happens holistically anyways. It's sort of implied as you're moving forward. I mean, in the sense of this that. You don't specifically have it on your matrix that it's in there, but it's implied that these are considerations that might be occurring based on. Uh administrations or other staff's knowledge or information or awareness that. Where I'm trying to go is one's a governance level, one's administrative level, and I just. I mean, I I mean, if we're gonna direct you to look at social kind of impacts, and then the other one is while we were doing it anyways.
Yeah, I would say we weren't doing it deliberately, um right? And so um. And and the truth of the matter is, I I do not foresee a day where administration would ever come and say that any criteria is going to supersede life and limb, right, and public safety. And I I know that's not. Um what what this council's talking about. Um but I think it was ad hoc and it was probably it was a differentiator, right? So if you got two things being equal and. There was an event related to one, that might be the differentiator between a decision about when you expend your money over time. Um but that was. Based on discussion around the water cooler, right, as opposed to a defined set of criteria. That that's probably being too loose with it and unfair to staff who are doing the hard work, but Ms. George, please go ahead and jump in there.
Yeah, I I would agree with you on that front. Um just to add some clarity. Um Counsel McKay, currently as we plan the RMR program, we do. Consult across the department for synergies. Uh when I say synergies, uh can you can utilities be coordinated with the road project before the road goes ahead? That kind of coordination. In that same light, we have had conversations on the special events coordinator um side of things as well. Hey, are there any? Special events happening in this within the next two years? Can we consider that? So it has been considered informally, not as a specific with a prioritization criteria or any weightage to that, right? So that's, do we want to bring that informal process to a formal? Then, yeah, let's have that in the policy would be ideal.
I understand that, but at what point do you stop adding things? I mean, we add this. Counsel could say, I want to add this or that. So what we're doing is is now we're dipping our toe in administration. So I mean, I mean, I could come back tomorrow and say, please consider. Um that this is gonna be. You know, bringing forward a priority that might have something that ties into. I I think with something that Counsel Jolly was trying to refer to, what is special needs? What is special? Like, I mean, we we we're gonna argue about or not argue, we're gonna discuss potentially. What is a a special need? And it might be different to every one of us on the on the board. So I mean, to me, I'm just concerned that. If we add this, why are we adding this? And then govern, we're not, we're not governing or sorry, and I don't.
No, it's okay.
Anyways, that's where my concern is. Because I mean, your background even says. Counsel may consider an alternative motion, and that's one when we're debating. That implies revision to, I mean, the word implies, I mean, uh where do we stop? That's my concern.
Counsel Kilik.
Uh I I think my question would hopefully try and confirm uh what Ms. George has just said is that. This work has been done informally, water cooler, um hit and miss uh kind of scenario. And what my uh motion does is to formalize that as part of this broader process review that is. Is being done on RMR and adds it as a formal criteria. So. Uh it it is. Have I summarized that correctly? Uh, Donnie, to. And and as well as by putting it in the larger review process, we're not asking to accelerate that. And do it as a standalone tweak, I guess, uh which would have required the the extra sixty thousand dollars to get it done sooner.
You you said it right. The way the motion is worded, we'll just, it just gives a special emphasis to consider the special events. As one of the criteria as we revisit the policy that we have currently and bring all the gaps that we have been considering in the past few years. Bring it all as one big package for council's consideration. At that point, um council will be able to debate whether it's truly required to be included in the governance document, which is where the. Policy is stating, and at that point, it can be debated whether it needs to be included as such as for the recommendation. Which will be twenty twenty six. I just want to clarify, the timeline is around twenty twenty six we are aiming for.
Okay, thank you. I just absolutely wanted to make sure that. Uh that was my understanding. That is a kind of a fine tuning of what I had originally asked for. Excuse me. I would, I had originally started to ask for something that was more standalone, but when I saw the complexity and and the uh. Cross-functional, you know, ninety some events and twenty some odd departments, uh I could start to see how complex. This my request was, and I I therefore, when I saw the alternative motion, that this be included in the larger piece of work. I am that that was uh why I put for the the alternative motion, so. And and again, that it doesn't require additional funding.
Okay, I got still Counsel Bremenski has a question.
Thank you. Um and I do understand that, you know, Counsel Kilik has brought this down, so it's a little bit more broad. One question I have for administration is I think the intent behind the motion is specific events that are regular events of ours. And keeping the streets, you know, in in proper shape for those. But what if um say, for example, we applied for an Olympics or whatever, you know, some kind of Olympics in St. Albert? And then all of a sudden, would you have to put a stop on, you know, your regular RMR to plan for a, you know, an an extra large event, so to speak? So I just want to know how you'd sort that out if that ever came to be.
Yeah, thank you, um Counsel. You know, I think. Those would be, um you know, the the analysis and the recommendation for a large-scale event would be an entity unto itself. Um and so if that were the case, and you know, there were infrastructure improvements related to the ability to successfully put on that event, right, that would be dealt with specifically. Uh and and yes, it could absolutely have impacts, right, to um our initial forecast. Um but but I would offer that, you know, it would be dealt with specifically. And and I guess, you know, the other point to this is. Um you're right, you know, the definition of event, you know, what events actually um merit. Um full-scale inclusion, we I guess, you know, we'd figure that out. Um and and it's those, you know, those marquee regular events. Um we could say that now, that would be part of the calculus to define it. Um is is a component of it. And then, of course, council always has the ability. To make specific bespoke decisions, right, on any infrastructure that comes down. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I think it would be a specific. Um analysis and recommendation and a workflow that would come out of that if if in fact there were infrastructure requirements related to a large-scale event. It wouldn't be under the the auspices of this policy. Ms. George, did I I articulate that correctly?
Yeah, absolutely. It'll be a separate project charter addressing those needs. If there is a, there was going to be an Olympics-type event.
So this wouldn't really interrupt anything in the big picture then. It's just a few words that you've added.
Yeah, you know, I I think it would alter um or inform the process by which we go about our our relative prioritization, right? And so. There there will always be lifecycle management. There will always be the the preeminent occupational health and safety, life, you know, public safety. Um components that underpin this. This would be an additional formal factor um that would be baked into the analysis and and that relative prioritization.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right, I see no questions online and none here, so accept your motion, Counsel Kilik. Go ahead.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. So this this did stem from, as we all recall, the request for the Soapbox Derby and. Uh at that time, it it that was not successful, and I understand absolutely why. Um the main thing was that we were trying to deal with with a one-off uh type event. And there we we have many of those one-off um one-time events, like, you know, fixing the road for. Uh Remembrance Day uh parade or um doing some improvements downtown for a specific day at Snowflake Festival or. Uh the they're, you know, making sure the road is is nice and smooth and and clean and swept prior to the. Rodeo parade or uh many things like that. Um eh preparing. Making sure there's no tripping hazards, uh you know, when we do our our Canada Day fireworks, et cetera, et cetera. So. Uh what this, we didn't want to be dealing with one-off. Kind of continual list of of requests. Is is this being done? Is that being done? So this was um when I, the backgrounder came forward and said there is a more holistic review being done. Um it's gonna take a couple of years, and I certainly understand when I saw the complexity of. Again, the number of projects and all of the departments that would be involved, I didn't want to add new work to teams that are already. Um maxed out. And that's why I'm prepared to wait uh for a couple of years to have this particular. Item added into the matrix of prioritization uh under. Under the asset management and the overall asset management strategy and how we treat our RMR. Uh budgets and activities. So this was uh kind of stepping back from doing it ad hoc to allowing administration to. Have enough time to to add this in as one criteria, uh one of many, I'm sure. Um that would or could influence the prioritization of one project or or another. And I hope I hope that. Doing it this way, it it still achieves, takes a little bit longer, but it still achieves a more holistic approach. Rather than a one-off uh kind of ad hoc around the water cooler uh type discussion.
Anyone else on debate? Counsel McKay.
Yeah, thank you, and and I appreciate the opening comments. I really do, and I appreciate where they arise from in in relation to it, because actually it was administration that actually identified that and it was. Some of the uh give and take in relation to the conversation from administration to your questions. Um uh but I mean, we can see, and I appreciate the backgrounder that administration has provided. It was extremely detailed and it clearly identified the prioritization metrics and the complex. Kind of uh methodology that has been employed to deal not only with RMR projects, but also growth projects and also how we deal with. These special events and and we recognize that if we were actually gonna have like a, if we were successfully getting the fifty-five and over or the winter. Uh Alberta Winter Games, they would come to us in a separate package and it wouldn't be as part of this prioritization. Um but it it was also clear in the backgrounder that a significant amount of work was already underway. By administration in identifying or re-looking at what went into the matrix, which is really comforting to me because as you. As you know, you have a a matrix that has must-dos, nice-to-haves, and you know, it would be really nice if we could do this, but we can't right now. And and I think um previous administrations has actually spent a great deal of time around prioritizing that so that we didn't get the one-offs and we didn't get into problems. Down the road by having to to not really have a robust method. And that's where my concern comes in. It's around, yeah, you know what, this is, this seems really logical and and I think administration has acknowledged that in their. In their uh replies, they were obviously looking at it now. That's why they put forward the alternative motion. My concern just in relates to what becomes governance and what becomes administration responsibilities. And I'm comforted by knowing that administration is really looking at this already because. It's a slippery slope for us to start meddling in administration in relation to what goes in a priority matrix. So as to my earlier comments, my concern is in relation to. um this one makes sense, we could do it, but I think it's already been identified by administration that they're already doing it. But what happens now if I want to add something else? And I'm not going to be silly and come up with something farcical just to make my point. But that's the, that's my worry in relation to this. Um, I'm comforted that, like I said many times, that we've already got a matrix, and I just don't think it's uh my role right now to determine what goes in the matrix, because as you has identified, Mr. Fletcher, council can always change, change the, uh if something comes forward and we say um we 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 want to push this forward, well, it's council's prerogative to do that. So, but I don't want to start getting involved in behind-the-scenes work and identifying individual things without a robust full-on discussion. And I realize administration's doing that. That's why I'm saying this seems redundant to me. If we do nothing, we're already, it's already going to be happening through uh this whole prior or this whole process that administration's already. Anyways, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else on debate? Seeing done, anything to close?
Uh, yeah, just uh.
Did I hear something?
Uh.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, just to close, um, my view was was quite fo- following along councillor McKay's comments, is that this was so this was so that council was setting a high-level strategy. Please consider stakeholder engagement and social value in your prioritization matrix. Then we set that high-level strategic goal, and we step back and let administration do their thing on a daily basis for all of the ninety or a hundred or a hundred and ten uh different items. And uh that gets us out of a administration role and lets them do um their their job that they know best. And that was my uh intent in going this direction. That was the recommendation from when we first brought it forward. Uh, that was the debate we had, you know, councillor Killick, you need to be more strategic. And that's uh what I, what I tried to accomplish with this, so I hope uh the rest of council sees it that way and supports it.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes with councillor McKay opposed. You're still friends?
He lost. He was the only vote for it, and now I'm the only one.
All right, um. I think it's time for announcements, and I know I'll go straight to you, councillor, because I know you had one, so I'll start with you.
Uh, just as a a comment, I'd like to recognize um Marga, Ms. Caulfield, and her team um that hosted on July eighth after it'd been rescheduled a couple of times, the council advisory committee update and question Q and A session. Um, she had a large, she had her whole team there, and it was, it was great. Um, alleged services was there to support as well. Uh, several of the CSA team, the CSAC team uh attended, and we had some good uh discussion and and clarification. And uh even I, again, uh go to these sessions and I learn something new. Um, so eh just thank you very much. That was a an evening session. Uh, so taking time out of everybody's evening to host that um and reschedule it around our hockey game, which we shall not talk about. Uh, so thank you again very much for that, for hosting that session. It was very informative and helpful.
Uh, and you also had a question, did you not?
Uh, yes, I did. It was for uh through you, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Fletcher. Uh, if Mr. Fletcher could give us an update on the new buses that, uh well, not new buses, but the new bus routes uh that would be coming into effect in Jensen Lakes and Riverside. I've had a couple of residents, in particular, more from Riverside uh asking about what the status is, because I think there's actually uh coming soon bus stop uh signs up, so they're all excited about what that means.
Thank you, councillor. And I'll ask, you just popped up. It's almost like you knew this was coming. I'll ask Mr. Saunders, uh the director of public operations, to join in.
Good afternoon, and through the chair to councillor Killick. Um, I'm very pleased to uh report that as of August twenty fifth, we will be offering our service to Riverside and Jensen Lakes. Our operations team, they just issued the uh route and scheduling to our contracted service provider last week in anticipation of the fall sign-up start on August twenty fifth. So we're going to have a new A three route that will be servicing Riverside. And there is some minor adjustments to our A six route that serves um North Ridge and uh also will be serving Jensen Lake. So there is an added benefit with the A six that we're getting a little bit more of the local uh movement that we're also looking to achieve, so.
Uh, great news. Thank you very much. And I'm sure the residents uh that that I'll talk to will be uh uh super excited as well.
And is that all you had? I know um councillor Jolly had an IR potentially.
I'm, I'm gonna think about it. Yeah, that was the social procurement one, and I'm not sure where I want to go.
Okay, perfect. Uh, councillor Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that we have somebody else who's flying the coop to this as of this month. And just acknowledge that while he's not on council, he does talk to us quite frequently, and that would be Jack, the reporter for the Gazette, who reports in council. And he is uh going on to be doing better things, and I just want to acknowledge the the work that he's done with us for the past couple of years and trying to do the best job he can at reporting and keeping the public informed. So um one of the few people that are probably watching this right now to the end, Jack, I just wish you the best. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any uh announcements or notice motions or IRs? I have two, one happy, one sad. Um, so you know that we had submitted our air structure plan for the west side of St. Albert to EMRB. I got emailed today that it has been approved through their process. And now it opens up for any appeals of the EMRB membership, which need to be in by August thirteenth. But that is good news for St. Albert, um getting that through the next step. And then the little bit of sad news that I have, many of you may or may not know, uh John Williams, he was our MP. I'm just looking from ninety-three to two thousand and eight, uh passed away last night. So if any of you know John or his family, um just just letting everyone know that good conservative man here in St. Albert uh who worked very hard um has passed away. So also a hard-working authoritarian. All right, um, you know, motion to go in council, I guess. Is that right? Yes. Or go in camera. Did I say go in council? Go in camera. Go ahead, councillor Broadhead.
That council moved in camera to discuss a matter pursuant to section twenty-one, one A and twenty-four, one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Okay, reconvene to council chambers.